This meeting is called to order. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the City of Boynton Beach City Commission Meeting. Today is Tuesday, September 5th, 2023, and the time is now 6:01 PM. Before we proceed, I want to remind everyone, we have many new guests here this evening, of our rules of civility and decorum. Officials must first be addressed by the chair and not interrupt a speaker. Public comments must be addressed to the commission as a whole and not to any individual on the dais or in the audience. Personal tax insults displays of rudeness and lack of respect are strictly prohibited. Disruptive behaviors from the audience, including but not limited to yelling, stamping of feet and similar demonstrations, are likewise prohibited. Please govern yourselves accordingly, as offenders may be removed after a warning from the meeting. City Clerk, I'm going to turn to you if you could please begin the roll call.
Mayor Penzerga.
Here.
Vice Mayor Turkin.
Present.
Commissioner Cruz.
Here.
Commissioner Hay.
Here.
Commissioner Kelly.
Here.
Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Our invocation for this evening will be led by Pastor Bryce Hudson of Christ Fellowship Church, followed by our Pledge of Allegiance, led by Commissioner Woodrow Hay. Let's all stand for the invocation and pledge of allegiance.
It's power hits. Well, Father, we come before you, and we are in awe of the blessings that you have poured out on this community. We are grateful for the amazing opportunity that we have to just be in your presence even tonight. I simply come before you and ask that you would continue to pour out your blessing upon this community, that you would make it a light that shines not just for this region, but for the state and for this country, what it is when people come together in unity, Father, to put you first. And so, we pray especially for your wisdom and discernment to be poured out upon this commission tonight, that the decisions that are made, that the words that are spoken, that would be of unity, would be of hope, would be of the truth that only comes from you. We give tonight to you, in your holy and awesome name, we pray. Amen.
Amen. A pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone, and thank you Pastor Hudson of Christ Fellowship Church. We appreciate you. Thank you. We are now moving on to agenda approval. This is additions, deletions, or corrections to the agenda. I'm going to begin on my right with Commissioner Angela Cruz. Do you have any additions, deletions, or corrections?
Not at this time, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner. Vice Mayor Turkin.
Yes, I would like to move up 3D after 2C, which is the artificial reef. And then also, I would like to table 10A. And then...
Vice Mayor, I'm going to recommend that you table 10A when we get to tonight, and you can just mention it then.
Okay.
All right. Sounds good. And what was the other item?
10B, and I know we have a, you know, I got an email from Tenille about an additional applicant. And so, from what I understand, in order for that individual to be considered, we would have to postpone that item, I believe. And so, you know, I just don't have time between, you know, a few hours before a commission meeting to, you know, scan through someone's resume or not. I don't know if we want to just hold off and give this person, you know, a fair shot or not.
So, let's have that discussion when we get to 10B. I'm happy to have that conversation. And the very first request that you made was about moving up the artificial reef item 3D in Section 2. Vice Mayor, I'd like to make some amendments myself to Section 2 to streamline the process.
Sure.
So, I would say, let's do 3D at the very beginning of the announcement section, so it'll be the next thing that we process immediately.
Okay, I'm okay with that.
All right. Do we have consensus on the board?
Yes.
All right, so we're going to move up 3D to right before 3A. Okay, so, all right, great. Anything else?
No, sir, thank you.
Thank you. We're going to move on to Commissioner Hay. Any additions, deletions, or corrections?
I'm good.
All right, Commissioner Kelly.
Thank you, Mayor. The only thing I wanted to, you know, on future agenda items, we have 13G. I just wanted to put maybe a date certain for the next meeting.
13G, let's find it. Yes, it's, it is...
Obviously, we would untable it then, but I wanted to put a time, a date certain on that.
All right, so what date would you propose?
The next, our next meeting.
So, this is the Advisory Board Annual Reappointments and Appointments. I'm comfortable with doing that. Let's hear from our colleagues.
I would add as well.
All right, we'll address this next meeting. All right, I have multiple head nods. All right, thank you, everybody. So, we will put this, what is the date of our next meeting? The 14th. All right, thank you. And let me confer with staff. Is that something we can do? I assume yes, but I just want to make sure.
Yes, absolutely. Thank you.
Excellent. All right, so as for myself, and this is through the advice of council as well as from staff members, to streamline this evening's multiple hearing items, particularly the budget, the millage rate, fire assessment, I'd like to propose we move up E and F, item 2E and F to right after 2A. So, that means we'll address millage and budget, followed by E, which is the fire assessment, and then F, followed by the canal assessment. All right? And then we'll proceed with the other items in this category in that sequence. Any objections?
No.
All right. May I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
Second.
Second.
I'm not sure who said it first. I'm going to say Commissioner Cruz said it first, and the second came from Vice Mayor Turkin. All those in favor of the proposal of all these amendments say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed say no. The ayes have it, the motion passes, agenda is therefore amended. Thank you, everybody. We're going to move on now to 2A, informational items by members of the city commission. This time, I'll begin on my left with Commissioner Kelly.
Thank you, Mayor. My disclosures, I did have an opportunity a long time ago. I can't believe I remembered. I talked to Bradley Miller and Bonnie Miskelworth regarding 8A and B, and also got resident emails and phone calls regarding 8C and D. And those are my disclosures.
Thank you. Let's go to Commissioner Hay. Any informational items or disclosures?
No informational item. I did talk with Bonnie Miskel, and that's it.
All right, thank you. And let's go to Vice Mayor. Any informational items or disclosures?
I did speak with all the candidates for the city attorney position, and then also I did speak with Bradley Miller a long time ago as well, in regards to 8A. Outside of that, I don't have anything there.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Commissioner Cruz?
Yes, Mayor. Regarding items C and D, I had a chance to speak to many of my constituents about item A and B, spoke to Bradley Miller and Bonnie Miskel. And regarding on item 10B, I had the opportunity to interview all the candidates as well.
Thank you. As for myself, my disclosure is that I spoke with Bradley Miller pertaining to item 8A. I think that's it. And that is it for me. All right, so now we're going to move on to 2A. And the way that we're going to proceed is 2A has two different resolutions. The first containing the proposed millage rate for the general fund for this coming fiscal year, followed by the resolution for the tentative budget for the general fund as well, and all other funds for this fiscal year. We will hear presentations from staff from both of those items, one after the other, after which we will open public comments specifically for the millage rate as well as the budget. After we hear from the public, we'll hear from the members of the commission, after which I'll start taking motions to proceed forward. All right, we have here Mara Fredrickson, our Director of Finance. Good evening and welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commission. So, tonight, we are, we have the first hearing for the adoption of the fiscal year 24 annual budget, and the fire assessment and the canal assessment, and then we will have the second reading on Thursday, September 14th at 6:00 PM. That is not the right presentation.
Laura, can you tell me which presentation it is?
The one that you had opened.
Does the one with Dan on it?
Yeah, that's it.
There we go.
We're on the third slide, Manny. Thank you. So, the purpose of the millage and budget hearing is to adopt our millage rate and our tentative budget, review any revisions since the workshop in July for our operating and capital budgets, provide an opportunity for public comment, and adopt the rate resolution for the fire assessment and the canal assessment. Next slide, please. The proposed millage rate remains the same as our current fiscal year 23 at 7.85 mils. The actual tax increase that our taxes are budgeted for was a 12.29% for the state trim, and the rollback rate would be 6.99 versus the 7.85. At the rollback rate, we would see a loss to the budget of $6 million. Next slide, please. So, since the workshop in July, our millage rate earned us additional 292,000, which we have added to the budget. We had projected the state shared revenues, so we finally got those numbers, so we did see a decrease there of 100,000. We have an increase of 200,000 for sales tax revenue, and we are proposing to put back $339,000 to fund balance. Next slide, please. Additional personnel since July, we have the grants coordinator, which was a proposed change. At the workshop, we added an administrative assistant to the special events department, an assistant too, to the internal investigation department. We have a split position between our program revenue fund, the 172 fund, and the recreation department in the general fund of the program facility coordinator, and a community standard specialist, which is also split between our building fund and our general fund. All of those are budget neutral, but they are personnel adds, so that's why we have disclosed them here. We are additionally adding a state-of-the-city event for $50,000. Next slide, please. The other fund changes, the building fund, the community standard specialist again is split between the general fund. We have proposed a recreation manager position, which is an upgrade of a current position. The other half of the program facility coordinator, which is in the general fund in the recreation fund, we are proposing a $60,000 increase to the 302 capital fund for the artificial reef, which we do have that discussion tonight, so that is up for conversation. We saw a decrease to the certex, CIP, that is primarily due to the Hester Center project having been completed this fiscal year, so that was about 3 million of the 4 million. And then we increased the cemetery design, or the cemetery fund by $50,000 for a design project. Next slide, please. Our total funding sources for revenue is 283.8 million. Water and sewer makes up 60.3 million of that. Property taxes make up 55.1 million. Our capital are 44 million. Our fund transfers are 19 million, and our internal service funds are 18.8 million, and so on. Next slide, please. On the expenditure side, again, 283.8 million. General fund is 41.9% of that, or 118.5 million. And one thing to note about the general fund, when we came into the workshop, the general fund was 120 million. Based on discussions at the commission workshop, we did bring that down by about $2 million, so that's coming in at 118 million. Our capital funds make up 44 million. Solid waste is 15.2 million. Our debt service is 12 million, and fleet is 11.4 million. Next slide, please. So, overall, all funds, we went from 298 million as the current year budget to a proposed 283 million. Actually, it's a 5% decrease. Primarily, we saw a decrease in fleet of 4.7 million, or 29%. General fund is up 11 million, 107 million to 118 million, or 10%. Water and sewer is 21%. Golf is up 5.4%. Our solid waste, I'm sorry, and golf is up 1%. Next slide, please. Based on the proposed millage rate, an average residential property of about 300,000 would see a $5.89 change to their property, a $500,000 property, we'd see a $9.81 change. Next slide, please. On the commercial property, a $300,000 property, based on the current millage, would see a $25 change, and a $500,000 property would see a $43 change. And that's all I have for the budget presentation.
All right, thank you, Mara. Let me turn to my colleagues if they have any questions while she's up on the podium. All right, seeing no questions for now, we may have some later. Mara, do you have any other presentations? Again, we're covering both the millage and the budget. I think that's pretty much it. All right, excellent. I do have some questions myself, but I will reserve that towards the end. Let's turn now to public comments, if there's nothing else from my colleagues. And so, if you would like to speak specifically on these two resolutions, on the millage rate as well as the budget, now is the time to approach the podium. After we hear from those in the audience in the chamber in person, we'll hear from those online, we will take digital hands raised up until the very last person has spoken in the room. All right, let's begin on my left. We do have two podiums. One second, where's my timer? All right, as always, three minutes per person. You may begin when you're ready.
Well, I wish the millage rate, David Cat, 67 Midwood Lane, for the city. I wish the millage rate would have been the rollback, but I'm not really here to talk about that. Talking about page 43 in the budget, which is the extra 180,000 for the commission stipends. Again, I'm speaking against that, which turns into over $36,000 each. And all I can say is, I hope that you later on just remove it from there. If it does pass by a vote of three to two, I urge those of us who get our water bills to use the promo code on your next water bill, IMGREEDYCOMMISSIONER, and then we can get maybe something back. There are those of us, there are those of us who sort of like go out looking for the birds and flushing them out of the alfalfa fields, and this is what we've done. If you want a raise, you get it along with the rest of the employees. I believe that's in the charter, if I'm not mistaken. And your raise should really be not any really particular percentage, or this extra $36,000, 10,000 for car, clothing allowance, office stipend, health insurance. There's no reason for it. Your raise should be that you do a great job as commissioners, you run for reelection, and you get reelected because you've done a great job. That's your pat on the back, not to come to us for that extra money that really everybody else in the city surely could use. There are people who are hungry, there are people who are homeless, and there are those of you who work full-time, work for the county, can avail yourself of the county health insurance, you can avail yourself of the city health insurance, you have other jobs, you work for the school boards, you can work, avail yourself of that health insurance. You don't need a health savings account. You don't need the extra $36,000 a year, and I urge you to remove all of it, all of it, from the budget. And if you decide to go like, well, maybe we should put it out to the voters, those of you who feel that's the case, God bless you. But instead of the taxpayers paying for the cost of putting it on the ballot, maybe those of you who feel it should be on the ballot should pay for it to be put on the ballot. Thank you.
All right, next speaker, state your name for the record and begin when you're ready.
Hi, I'm Jackie Mond. Okay, so I have a question for the budget. If she says that, you know, at a certain point, it was $25 for, what was it, 200 mil or something? If that's the case, why does our tax bill come back and it tells us like every single thing in the city wants a huge raise? How is that only going to be $25? And also, you know, this goes to what she was saying about the funeral home. If you don't have money for the funeral home to keep those people in place so people can be buried on time when they have their funerals, which that is absolutely horrifying to know that people that are being buried can only be buried on certain days during the week, and their families come for the funeral on the weekend, and this is really wrong. It's a disgrace. And the funeral places, the potters' fields, whatever you want to call it, need to be put back in place full-time the way they were. You cannot cut these people. They have a right also, even the dead have a right to be buried on time. And if our, if our cost is going up, then you need to put it back in the funeral people's pocket so that they can be buried on time. And, you know, if you have the money, if you don't have the money for that, then how do you have the money for an audit office and to support people in the audit office, where we all know, and we all know, that in an audit office, you could have back deal things going on, and you can force those people to agree with you? So, we are against the audit office, and we do not want to pay for an office, we do not want to pay for employees, you don't have the money for it. We don't have the money for it. You've already told us that by taking away the funeral people. And also, you know, if you're going to take the funeral people away, you can't pay for the other people, so that doesn't make any sense. So, you can't do it. You have to put the funeral people back, because those people who use those areas for being buried have rights more than we do. They have more rights when they die to be buried on time when their families are there and not told they have to come back five days later. And what else can I say? I can say that still, I don't agree with any of the taxes that you're trying to pull out of us, and I do not comply, and I will not comply with that, and I will fight it. I'm going to the school board meetings next to fight it, because you guys really cannot be raising us all the time. When everything else is going up, this is not the time to start raising it on us, we the people. And that includes you who live in your homes in Boynton Beach, because you're all supposed to be living in Boynton Beach, and I sure hope every one of you live in Boynton Beach, because that is being investigated. So, that's what I have to say, and thank you, and I'll be back shortly.
All right, next speaker. State your name for the record and begin when you're ready.
Thank you. Excuse me. My name is David Merker. I'd like to start my little talk using one word, and that word is, as I look at the people, it's called respect of the people.
Sir, I'm going to ask you to just speak to us.
Okay. I would assume they're part of the group.
They can hear you.
Respect. And that's what's lacking. What's lacking is when you think of the word "I" instead of "we," if you know what's going on in the economy, not just locally, but even nationally, you take some steps back and you think of your fellow neighbor. I find it absurd, abhorrent, that you people think, you say you want to represent the people, yet you want to take increases in benefits. Who are you? The people out here, let them comment whether or not you, the elected official, and I believe most of you know, I had that privilege and honor to be an elected official in the city of Boynton Beach. So, I'll finish up by saying, you lack the respect of the people to be so selfish, to want these increases in different benefits, let alone a fellow speaker who just spoke. How you're demonstrating, explaining, letting it represent you, instead of the people truly understanding what you're doing. It's called greed and no respect.
Next speaker.
Cindy Falco de Carrado, your employer. I want to bring up here on our sales tax, that Boynton Beach, if maybe people don't know, for Boynton Beach operating expenses, now this is just one home here in Boynton Beach, and I think we have what, like 80,000 or plus, or a million or something? I'm not sure how many, but it's like $1,051 for my household. So, times that by all the other households, how are we continually raising money for higher taxes on the working people and on your bosses? Because we are your bosses, and it was a privilege for you to be able to sit in those seats, to be a voice with limited authority for we the people, which you see out here are we the people. I noticed you're going to be talking about the $120 for the fire department. Once again, I see that on my bill, an assessment. It's all worked out in the budget. Why are you hardcore on causing the debt of greed, as what just was mentioned, on we the people? We've had enough. We work hard. Do you know that you get most of our tax dollars with taxes? I've got taxes here. I know that it might not be total complete, but I have two state taxes, one state tax for a public school, and another state tax by a local school board right here in Palm Beach County. I'm paying for things on this tax bill that have nothing to do with what we here in the city of Boynton Beach have. Why are we being taxed these things? And I'll be bringing that up again. We have a healthcare tax here of $90.58. That's just one household. Times that by every household in Boynton Beach, the city thereof, and every household, period. I didn't ask for that. I didn't, I didn't sign up for that. I didn't consent to that. I don't comply or agree or consent to any of these charges, but yet you take liberties to charge us. And as was mentioned, in hidden little agendas, stipeds or whatever, you're seeking for higher raises under the guise of, and I hope that you don't try to do a charter to try to keep that and slip that in, because we're paying attention. We the people are watching everything that you're doing, because we the people have had enough. We've been taken advantage of long enough. We're living in very difficult times. If you have not noticed, I'm glad that you all can maybe not feel the pinch of it, but we feel the pinch of it. We work hard, we're out there every day, and we don't want our monies robbed. So, we're becoming very good stewards of our dollars, and we're paying attention to each and every one, how it's being spent, where it's going, what you're doing with it. And going to Dallas with the CRA at $5,000 per person is obscured. It is a ripoff, it is highway robbery, and we're just done with the thievery.
All right, next speaker.
Mike McCray, 806 Northwest Fourth Street, Boynton Beach, Florida. First of all, I'm going to talk about the pay raise that you all are trying to get. I'm totally against it. It's ridiculous. You all should be ran out of Boynton. Second of all...
Excuse me, excuse me. Do not interrupt a speaker. You can make your applause after. Let's not interrupt this time.
Second of all, you all said that we're going to have a $6 million decrease lost flight. Okay, if you all had not paid attention, we just had a hurricane that went through Florida. I want to know, are you all going to be taking funds from my emergency funds to help balance this budget? I'm going to be honest with you all. The presentation of the budget was one of the lousiest ones I have ever seen. You all are trying to increase, and the citizens are being bamboozled. We are not aware of it. I'm going to talk to you all about the fire assessment. I had the privilege to set up there with on the dais, not this one, I was in Old City Hall. That's how far it goes back. The fire assessment was supposed to have sunsetted in seven years, because the reason it stayed on the books was because we needed fire departments. We obtained those fire departments. You can smile all you want to, Mayor, I'm just saying, you know, I'm kind of tired. I'm going to go ahead and finish. And here we are, still talking about the fire assessment for the city of Boynton. It might not affect the rich, but it sure as hell affect the poor that live over in District 2. I have three properties. I'm being hit three times for a fire assessment. Hopefully, I don't need the services. The cemetery, you also, you're putting $50,000 for a cemetery study. I don't know what it's for. I came up here last, last time you all had a meeting and stated that I needed some information. Nobody had the decency or the courtesy to call me and say, we're working on it. I guess you thought I was talking for my health, but I was not. The $50,000, what, y'all planning on doing a cemetery proposal, plan of whatever you want to do? People in District 2, we're concerned. There's a commissioner that set up there and said that y'all was looking for a property out west. I still need to know, have you all found the property? It was at a meeting, they said that they was going to use the scrubs to make it a cemetery. The scrubs are protected. And you know what? I don't know how you feel about your dead, but I sure as hell won't mind it be thrown anywhere. Might as well put them on the trash pile. Thank you.
All right, next speaker.
Susan Oyer, Seacrest Estates, Boynton. I don't know how it's possible to follow former Commissioner McCray on this, but I'm going to say, on this excessive, over one-quarter billion-dollar budget, what was it, two years ago? It was a quarter of a billion dollars. Now, we've jumped 60 million dollars in like, what, two, three years now? That just makes me crazy. I say, we need to say no to the tax increases, no to the approximately 125% pay raise you want to give yourselves. I say no to the CRA trip, because that's just obscene. You need to stop wasting our ARPA dollars. You need to stop wasting our ARPA dollars. There was approximately $900,000 given out to the schools in this city. Having worked in the school system, I know there's so little accountability, it's not even funny. Only Point Sienna Elementary could stand up here, that principal, and tell you where the money was going and good for her. Give them the money. She could tell you details where that money was going. Not a single other school could. Where is that money? Who's going to be held accountable for it? Who's monitoring it? Why did we throw this away? Because we need to be putting our money in our infrastructure. We now, I'm guessing, are going to have a huge fine from the government for the sewage waste that went into the intercoastal and we should have been putting that money into our permanent infrastructure. That is so much more important. In looking at the budget that she went through very quickly, that I just, I agree with Commissioner, former Commissioner McCray, the way this was presented was not acceptable to the public. How much is going to electric cars? One fourth of all cars will be electric in the next two years or less. Are we future-proofing our city? Are we reaching out to FPNL for solar power, the, the solar panels to put over the parking of all the city parking lots so that we are gaining income off of our parking lots to help defray the cost of our, our budget here that's ballooned out of control? Are we actively ticketing people for parking in EV parking spaces? That's supposed to be, I believe, a $30 B according to state. Do you have it posted? Are you charging people? You should be. That's the income maker, at least for the short term. You do need to fix the cemetery problem because that is just not going away and it's going to balloon even more. And I say no to employing a city attorney. I think we need a certain amount of away separation of state and church, separation of our different branches of government here because putting the attorney under you all is the wrong choice. And so that, and I, unlike everyone else, don't have a problem with the fire assessment because I know I sat there in those meetings when this went on years ago and I understand the purpose behind it. And if you know the history and the reason it was put in, and I'm not disagreeing about the sun setting of it, but I don't have a problem with the $120, $120 fire charge. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next speaker. We're going to go back and forth between the two podiums. Please approach the podium, state your name for the record, and then we'll go back to the other side.
My name is Gary L. Fishman. I've lived at 3504 Diane Drive for 33 years. Our neighborhood thoroughly appreciates the city commission's support, caring and votes for the bridge. The city manager, assistant city managers.
Mr. Fishman.
My name is Gary L. Fishman.
I, I understand. Can I interrupt you for one moment?
Yeah.
We will have a time for public comments when it comes to the canal assessment. This is just for the millage as well as the budget.
Oh, okay.
So we'll, I will have another opportunity if you want to speak specifically to that.
That sounds fine.
All right. Thank you.
I'm not looking, I'm not looking for applause with my statement here, however, and I won't get it. However, I think that the people up on the dais should maybe try to clarify about the budget.
Thank you.
Because I do believe that there's money. I can't talk, this is about the budget and about.
You want to switch to OpEx? Okay.
Yeah, this is about the budget.
I just want to make sure I understand your intention.
Yeah.
And all right, I'll resume the timer.
Okay. I apologize about not following protocol. I do believe that the city commission does work very hard and that all along, they just have not been compensated properly. And I hope that the city commission can clarify some of their needs and wants because I feel that if they work more hours and they work more diligently for the people, that they, along with the city managers, assistant city manager and city managers, I do believe that the combination of a good city commission, which we do have, no one has, it's interesting, no one has commented about the quality of people sitting up on the dais. I do believe that a little bit more compensation would be needed and would be appreciated. And I hope that people can, not necessarily applaud for me, but I hope that people can see that there's good people up here and I do believe that a little bit more compensation would be justified and I thank you.
Thank you. Excuse, excuse me. We will not tolerate booing, all right? Sir. Next speaker. Begin when you're ready.
Try it again.
There we go.
Hi, Ernest Mignoli, 710 Northeast 7th Street, Boynton Beach, also known as Harbor Hall Inlet Club condominium, 28 units. We bought there in October of 2020. Since then, the building is falling apart. The city won't help us. The taxes are going through the roof. It seems that the city is very close with the HOA associations in this town so that the developers and the HOA associations tend to sort of, you know, control things and, and not really help the people who live in these buildings with crime, with problems with the buildings. And what I find most interesting when you come here is that most of your legal team seems to think it's funny.
Sir, I'm going to pause you right here.
What?
You need to speak specifically on the budget and the military.
I am.
Those are the only two acceptable items.
I'm speaking.
This is your first warning. I will resume your time. You may continue.
So the budget, the way I look at it, needs a lot of investigation, serious investigation. It needs serious transparency. It needs serious accountability because I've done a lot of research about where the money is going, where it's coming from in the budget, and I don't really like what I see. And I'm not going to criticize anyone that I'm looking at, but I got to tell you something. I got a lot of questions where all the money's going, especially the, the COVID money, switching it over and using it and the budget. We got so many people without food, without a safe place to live in Boynton Beach and look where the money's going. Every time we meet about the budget, it's the same thing. People come up and talk how desperate everybody is for help and then the meeting goes on for hours and then it always votes to approve everything against what the people want. I mean, when do 80,000 people ever get what we want? So you're.
Again, do not interrupt a speaker.
Thank you.
Continue.
Yeah. So, so, you know, when you, when you analyze the budget piece by piece, I, I mean, it's frightening of a $283 million budget, where the money's going and the fact, no matter what you do, no matter what you file, no matter what you ask, you can't get any answers about anything. No, no, no matter what, you file an Oprah, you don't get a response. You file a FOIA, you don't get a response. You send an email, you don't get a response. No, no matter what, the budget is just going on by the people sitting here. And, and I, I notice often that the, the room is filled with a lot of supporters and I, I can't believe how, since I'm living here, I don't ever remember living in a place, except New Jersey, where the budget is so tied to politics and so tied to development and so tied to special interest groups and so tied to businesses where every time you come and you talk about the budget, about helping everybody, it's always businesses, billionaire businesses. They got more money than anybody, but you never hear anything about, about 17,800 people living in poverty in Boynton Beach. You don't hear anything. You don't talk about it. And then every time, it sounds like you're going to help. At the end of the night, when you vote, you always vote against the citizens, always.
All right, this is last call. Anybody else in the room that would like to speak specifically on the budget and milit rate? There will be additional public audience opportunities for other topics. State your name for the record and begin when you're ready, sir.
My name's Robert Tobano. Been a resident since 1971. With that being said, I just wanted to bring up the graveyard. I know the graveyard's on the budget. Which graveyard? Wilbright or the one on High Pluxo? It's just a question. So is it 25,000 apiece for each graveyard? What I have here is what it took me about an hour and a half to find is my uncle's gravestone. It was buried. I'd love to share this picture. It was buried. It took us a while to find it. Me and my wife had to dig and look for it. I then had to go back and figure I would put some stones around it so we could always find it again. Why is that my job? Now, between that graveyard down the street over here, I got my father in it. I got my uncle in it. I've got my wife's grandparents in it. I got my wife's father in it. We got to take care of the dead. How does it not get taken care of? Where did we lose any kind of reality on? Just a question. I guess I got no answers, but I'd sure like to see more, more done on that, you know? To me, that, that was heartbreaking. I had to reach out to my cousins that are in Tallahassee to show them what I had to do and it's, it's just, it's pathetic. But with that being said, thank you.
Thank you. All right. I see no one else approaching the podium. With that, public comments on the milit rate and the budget is now closed in the chambers. We're going to go to those online. Manny, how many people do we have with their digital hands raised?
Mr. Mayor, we have a single hand raised.
All right. What's the name? And please unmute that person.
That person's name is Stephen Grant. Stephen, you're unmuted. Go ahead.
Thank you. I'd like to just say that I think.
Say your name for the record.
I believe Manny said my name was Stephen Grant. Did you not hear that?
You cut off. I'm sorry. We couldn't hear you. So we're going to go ahead and begin the timer, begin when you're ready, sir.
All right. So I'm glad to hear that the commission is getting more expenses for their time and effort putting into the city of Boynton Beach. When I was there, it was sad for me to see when I, after I left, that the city had to pay me extra money because the previous administration wanted to withhold city commission pay. So I just would like to look at the expense report because I don't think it was necessarily, you know, if the city commission isn't using the money for expenses, it shouldn't be for salary. So I hopefully that the city commission will issue an expense report for the extra money that they are receiving. I saw that there was 50,000 for the state of a city. I look forward to that event. And as for Pirate Fest, I didn't see anything in the, the budget to help sponsor that. So does the city of Boynton Beach, I'll, I'll have to ask later, looking for sponsors to help with their certain events so that it's not all on taxpayer payers and that people who actually live here and work here can inform the public that they are living and working here? So thank you and good luck on the budget.
Is that it? All right. Well, thank you so much. I believe that was the end of it. And Manny, I just want to double check. Was that the only person with the digital hands raised?
Yes, sir. I can confirm that.
All right. With that, public audience on these two items are now closed. Having heard from staff and from the audience, we're going to turn now to my colleagues here on the dais for their questions and commentaries pertaining to these two resolutions. This is the proposed milit rate followed by the, the tentative budget for the general fund and all other funds for this fiscal year. Let's begin. I started on my left earlier, so let's begin on my right with Commissioner Cruz. Any questions or comments pertaining to the budget?
I mean, there's, there's a lot. I, I had a quick conversation with city manager about sharing one of the admin positions to be able to also support the, the finance department where they would be able to help with the grant applicants for the residents, for the, whether it's CDBG or ship funding. I just wanted to make sure if that position could be split, maybe 50/50 to be able to support that department as well because we do have, you know, hundreds of applications that, you know, this is where our residents really need a quick turnaround and we really need to be able to support that on there. So I did have a quick conversation with you, but I just wanted to bring that up.
Yeah, let's say a great point, Commissioner Cruz. We did, I spoke with the finance department today. We're going to add an ancillary duty to that position. Man, split it between the grants and the appropriations that we submit annually as a city to include a CDBG funds admin assistant and also ship fund. So I know Christopher Smith, if he's in here, I'm sure he'll be happy about that. So, yeah, definitely.
So is that an additional position or is that going to be split between the, like, you're saying the, the grants coordinator would be the one to?
It's going to be a split, correct? Yes.
Between which position?
Between the admin assistant for CDBG funds and RJ and Christopher Smith, who's in our CDBG funds and also the ship funding.
No, I meant with which departments would be splitting it?
It's going to be between grants and CDBG, both.
Okay. All right. Thanks.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Cruz. Let's turn now to Vice Mayor. Questions, comments about any of these two items?
Yeah. So I just want to hear from the city manager about the allowances and the thought process behind that. And then I also have a question for the city attorney.
The, the thought process behind the allowances, it was, it was twofold. The last, when we did the research and I looked at a few other cities, I looked at Tamarack, I looked at Wilton Manners, I looked at a few other cities. I had Legal, the previous firm that was here, actually draft what the, pretty much the tri-county area gets paid from a commission standpoint. The Row, there was quite a few other cities. And we've, what we found, it was essentially a, it was, it was a mix between allowances and it was a mix between whether or not commissions had the authority to provide pay raises, which what was really. It was really.
It happens to all of us.
Yeah, exactly. It's not a big deal. What was really confusing was I was looking at, why was Boynton Beach the only city that had to go to referendum? Because when I did the research into the referendum and I spoke with our city clerk, she informed me that to go to referendum would probably be a price tag between like 150, 200K to add an item like that on. And when we were looking at it, I had our legal assistant, Lynn Swanson, she's, she's great, phenomenal. She pulled two particular ordinances. And so we looked at things that had happened in the past that we could reference and we also looked at things that we haven't done in quite some time. So the charter, if you read the charter, it essentially references 2005 was the last time there was any pay increases provided to the commission as a whole. Now, I have both of those. Both were essentially done by ordinance. So when I was looking at those historically, I didn't understand how the commission could provide a pay raise in the form of ordinance, which not, didn't go to referendum. So I had to convert with Legal. So the Florida State statute, 16602, provides the commission with the power and authority to provide pay raises, whether or not it's done at budget time, mid-year budget cycle, whenever. So I conferred with city attorney who also confirmed that that was the reason why we see, and I have both ordinances here, and I'll briefly go into the context of those ordinances. So in both 2003, which was ordinance number 03-037, it said, each member of the city council commission, including the member who serves mayor, shall receive salaries as follows, not to exceed $350 per member per month, which one of our former commissioners, I don't know if he's here now, but he got up and he spoke to that where he received his $350 per month. So that is factually accurate, $4,200 annually. So effective October 1st, 2003 via ordinance, they changed that to provide the mayor an almost 200% pay raise to move from $4,200 to $12,000.
I'm sorry. Can you repeat that last part? In 2003, they did what?
They gave themselves a pay raise of almost 200%.
200%?
Correct. That went from $4,200 to $12,000 paid in equal monthly installments. So also with the commission, it was around 120%, which moved their annual compensation from $4,200 to $9,000 annually. So then I pulled 2006, which was again done via ordinance. One of the commissioners had also spoke, that actually sat on that dais that could probably give more specific information. They moved their salary 50% from 12,000 to 18,000 paid in equal, equal monthly installments. So then we also had the commission who moved their salaries from 9,000 to 15,000. So I looked at it from the standpoint of, we haven't had a movement from a, a, a prumerit movement for the commission or the mayor in close to 20 years, 18 years since 2005. We've been relying strictly on CPI. Anybody who knows CPI, Consumer Price Index, doesn't take into account food or fuel. So those things are kind of left out and you think you're, the cost of living has only moved up by 10% last year, 5% this year. I guarantee you, there's a plethora of individuals out here that will disagree with you.[1797.42] I guarantee you, there's a plethora of individuals out here that will disagree with you. So that was my thought process. I did it from an allowance standpoint. Again, it could be done from an ordinance standpoint. It can be done from an allowance standpoint. Now, the reason why those were the percentages, the way they were done, I compared it to previous pay raises that were provided in the past. So again, that was my thought process behind it. I know you, pardon me if I'm a little stuffy. I'm still recovering from being sick, but that was a thought process. That's why it was added into the budget. Again, hindsight's 2020, maybe looking at the, some of the allowances, they could have been adjusted, but I know from 2005 until now, maybe if the commission would add a merit aspect to the pay raises, we don't have to see such large pay increases that cause public ire the way we're hearing tonight or the way we've heard previous. Maybe that could be done in more of a, a standard approach to where there's a merit and also a CPI raise in conjunction with one another, like staff has. So I know we have pay plans for our CBA employees, police, fire, SEIU. They have a combination of merit. They have a combination of a cost of living code. So that was thought process. Again, I'm not going to be redundant. I'm going to turn it over to the city attorney to confirm essentially what I just told you.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager, Mr. Mayor, members of commission, David Tulsa, Senator and City Attorney. You know, I was asked to look at, how was the city commission able to increase their salaries by ordinance back in 2003, 2006? You know, most people believe that the only way you can amend a charter is through referendum. However, because the city of Boynton Beach charter was adopted prior to 1973, there are certain provisions in section 166.021 of the Florida statutes, which apply to the city of Boynton Beach and its charter. That statute section specifically provides that only certain elements of a city charter must go to referendum. And amendments to items such as terms of elected officers, the manner their election, election dates, qualifying periods, distribution of powers among departments, and any change of the form of government or rights of municipal employees, those types of items must go to referendum. Right? An item that is not included in that is items such as salary. So based upon the fact that that element is not included in the statute that would require referendum, I believe the, the commissions back in 2003, 2006, took their action pursuant to ordinance because the Florida statutes treat those charter provisions that were adopted prior to 1973 as ordinances, and they can be amended as other ordinances are adopted. So in those instances, they had two readings of an ordinance to amend those provisions which are in the charter. So that is how it was done. If you, if you choose to follow that process today, you can do that as well for your salary, or you can include it as part of your budget as an allowance. But that's, you know, that's how we got to where we are today. And I have it answer any other questions you might have.
Thank you, David. Thank you, City Manager. So, so in essence, there hasn't been a merit increase since from 2005 to, to date is what you're saying. Yet, yet, you know, this is a hot topic. Obviously, we've heard over and over again. And we've, but what we haven't heard is that in 2003 and 2006, that that commission increased their pay. Okay. So my stance on this is similar to my colleague, Commissioner Hay had mentioned earlier this summer. I don't think an increase that significant should go without referendum. I think that needs to be decided. However, I do think if you look at 15 years and you compare that to the private sector, I would be, I would be okay with an office and HSA contribution. I don't think clothing allowance, clothing allowance or car stipend is valid. And then any increase, I think we would need for our salaries to go move forward with an ordinance, since there's historical context there. So Commissioner Hay, you know, I know you mentioned prior that you would support some type of moderate increase. So I'm with you on that.
Was that it? All right. Thank you, Vice Mayor. I'm going to turn it, go ahead.
And this is to address some public comment earlier about the, can I just get clarification, maybe city staff about the bridge and that funding source? So there's not, there's not any confusion between ARPA dollars and then the actual budget? And why we're not seeing that here? Just to clarify.
No, you, the commission voted on that to utilize the ARPA funding for the design of the bridge along with the paving of a few other streets with those ARPA funding. That's separate from our CIP budget where we do have other streets budgeted. So no, that's not going to be presented here tonight. But the design is budgeted for 300,000 for the bridge over on Mission Hill. Yes.
For this year?
Correct.
Okay. And then, um, thank you for that clarification. And then the other thing I want to just throw out there is maybe having a future discussion about the settlement funds from the town square project, you know? I'm, I'm really excited and I'm grateful that my colleagues have utilized those funds and some improvements for Chapel Hill. You know, it's long overdue with all our districts. I think there's a lot of long overdue roads and projects that need to be done. So I just want to keep that conversation going. Because as we get started, I think if we can find monies to add to these projects, I think that's important versus going back later and having to tear up. I just want to knock everything out at once.
All right. Thank you, Vice Mayor. I'm going to turn now to Commissioner Hay for questions and comments on the military rate as well as the budget.
On the military rate, I have no problem. On the fire assessment, I have no problem. My position on the increase has not changed from the very beginning. I do not support it. I understand where city manager is coming from, heart is in the right place. But I think something, there is a lot of work that we must do up here, but I came on board in 2007. And at that time, I didn't really consider salary. Matter of fact, right now I would do this for nothing because I'm a servant. That's me talking. And I mean that from the heart. I would support everything in the, in the budget with the exception of the increase that is proposed. I would suggest that we take a look at something that's more reasonable, something that would be in a single digit or something that would be phased in. But to go from zero to 100, it's just an expression, I cannot support. I feel that it, it's just not the way to go in this, in this time. I know it's been almost 20 years. I believe I heard you say since we had an increase and, and that shouldn't be. We should, we should really get increases subtle in the neighborhood with, with staff and employees. Something 3% up to, I don't know, nine, I don't know, we can talk about that, but, but no more than a single digit increase, if at all. So at this point, I cannot and I will not support the increase that is proposed. Matter of fact, I will even go as far as saying that if my colleagues here decide to go with that, I would not receive the increase. I would not accept the increase. I don't think it's fair. I think it's too much. I think it's something that we need to talk more about and come out with a plan that will be acceptable. I don't even need to consider going to referendum. We, we don't need to even go that route. Should we get an increase? Yes, we should. I don't go along with one of the speakers saying that if I get reelected, that's my reward, a pat on the back. I don't, I don't buy that. Because everything is increasing, cost of living, and we're just like anybody else. When I come out of office in another two and a half years or whatever it is, I'm going to be living in Boynton Beach. I'm not going anyplace. And when I walk the streets and talk to the people that are sitting here in the audience tonight and those who are online and even those who are not here, I want to hold my head up high that I did the best thing for myself and for the city to move it forward. The idea behind it is great. We should be making more, but that's not the purpose for which I ran. And I don't think it should be the purpose of anybody running. You're not going to get rich on this, on, in this position. Okay? And so I think something that's reasonable, something that's a little bit phased in or whatever you want to call it, I would support that wholeheartedly. But at this stage and with what I have been given, I cannot and I will not support it, nor will I accept the dollars that if it passes, go through, I would not accept it. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Hay. I'm going to turn now to Commissioner Kelly.
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioner Hay, I, I couldn't agree more with you. You know, you know, city manager, I commend you for looking into this and, and seeing, you know, looking at other cities and, and areas and seeing how, you know, what other cities are, are paid. But it is a, it's a significant jump and there's expenses that really, I know why you plugged them in where you did. But they're unrealistic as far as what, you know, we do in, in my opinion, you know, I, like Commissioner Hay, it took this position knowing full well what the, what the pay was and what our commitment was. It has definitely turned into a lot bigger and time consuming than, than you anticipated with all the extra meetings and, and boards that we're expected to be on and participate in. But it's something that I have, I enjoy doing and it's a challenge and, and I'm supported by my family in doing it. And so I continue on and, and then do it with my servant's heart. So I'm with you. Commissioner Hay, I think that you're right on point with, you know, the expenses. My one question that I do have for you, city manager, is I wanted, there was some conversation early on about some of the, there's a lot of itemizations that are included in our commission budget that, that are really outside of our control and they're not coming to our pockets. So I wanted you, I wanted you to just briefly explain two key itemizations so that just the public understands what those, those funds go to. One was for memberships. We are, and I'll let you explain more, but we, we, we have to be members of, of certain boards. And so those dues are part of that. But then also our community, our community funds, that was something that was brought up also, where is that money going? And so those are two things I really wanted you to, to touch on because I think it's important that the public hear what, what those, what those do and what those support. Because I think it's more than what, what they know. So if you would just briefly talk about that and then I'll finish my comments.
Yeah, I'll start with the former, which is the, the memberships. So it's, every industry has membership, whether or not you're in the private industry or you're in government services. I belong to the International City Managers Association, which is standard across the board, Florida City Managers Association, Palm Beach County City Managers Association. There's different tranches and different levels. So the reasonings why there, those are there are for educational purposes. A lot of times you get continuing education credits whenever you go to different courses. It's no different than sitting on a pension board. You want the, the folks that are representing your financial interests and have a fiduciary responsibility to the city to be, one, educated and two, know the updates that are coming down the pipeline from a legislative standpoint, because Tallahassee changes, the federal government changes US codes constantly. So it's important that you stay up to date. The purposes of those memberships are so, the members of the commission can have that educational benefit because every three years you could have new membership representing the community of Boynton Beach. Every six years you could have a new member of the commission representing the city of Boynton Beach. That timeframe flies by in an instant. So a lot of times you may not have individuals who have, are familiar with different legislative, different legislative aspects. They haven't worked in the city like a staff member. I've been here 20 years and I'm still learning. So it's important from the commission that they do have those educational opportunities. And we live in the United States. So obviously there's a thousand different municipalities surrounding the country. These memberships are held in different parts. They could be in Dallas. They could be in Atlanta. They could be in Orlando. They could be in New York. It just depends on where that organization is going to centrally locate that specific area for training. So that's why the memberships exist for your guys' educational benefits, for continuing education. So you got to stay up to date on the differing changes that you can bring these opportunities. And I'll, I'll give you a perfect example. When the mayor goes to conferences and things like that, you have networking opportunities. You have opportunities for grant funding that you had no idea what you have, which could come into form of federal transportation dollars that we can bring here, help pave our roads, cleanliness grants, all sorts of stuff. So when you go out and you have these memberships, you can go to these different conferences and classes, things of that nature. And that's kind of standard across the board. Delray has it, Lake Worth has it, Boca has it. Every single municipal member has that. It's a standard membership across the board. So the latter now that you had briefly mentioned, the community sport funds, those community support funds are exactly in its name. It's support the community. And they are provided to each commissioner for their specific districts. They can provide those funds to differing nonprofits, which go back, whether or not it's for the Wounded Veterans Foundation. It can be in the form of the Police Athletic League, which is big in District Two, Commissioner Hay. So there's, those funds are redistributed back into the community for differing organizations that actually come to depend on. Feeding South Florida comes to mind. There's quite a few differing nonprofits out there. Really go and they really benefit and help the, the people of the community that are less fortunate than a lot of us. So hope that answers your question, the question.
Thank you, Senator. Yeah, I just wanted, you know, those were some of the ones that had been brought up previously as to what those meant. And so I thought it was important that we, that we touched on that. I, just like Commissioner Hay, you know, I, I feel like the allowances are excessive. I understand the point, but I will not be supporting that. But I would like to, to look at, you know, potentially an ordinance or a discussion with the commission with regard to a reasonable, you know, salary increase that, or like city manager said, a merit increase that is something that is modest, but that will, will help especially our, you know, commissioners who, you know, maybe don't have a full-time job to, you know, that this, you know, can, can kind of assist that, even though that's not the purpose of this. So that's, those are my, that's my.
All right. Let's keep it going.
So that's my position on that is that I would not support the budget as it is written. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Cruz, I didn't get a chance to hear from you. Just want to make sure I give you the opportunity to speak on the topics of discussion.
Yes. Thank you, Mayor. From a general perspective, whether it's me sitting in this chair or it's someone else, I do believe we need to have people here at city hall while city hall is open, again, whether that's me or not. Because if you really want accountability and transparency, you can't get that as much as you can with somebody who works nine to five elsewhere. And after six o'clock, you know, does the best they can as well every day of the week as well as no, on the weekends, no days off, to read the budget, to go through agenda reviews, through, to go through the agenda in itself. So whether, again, whether that's me or whether that's somebody else in the seat as a resident of the city, I do believe that we need people here at city hall when this place is open, not after six o'clock. With that being said, this is a different conversation. But I do think that having a reasonable change would be positive. I do not support what was proposed in the original budget. I do not support the clothing allowance. I do not support the car allowance. I do support, however, the health component, which I've said before, and I would support an office stipend because we do spend a lot of time and we meet with constituents. I mean, we do town halls, we do a lot of stuff that people might not know, but, you know, we're here to serve. It doesn't change the fact that we have a heart to serve. I think everyone that's here definitely has the heart to serve, has the inspir- I think everyone that's here definitely has the heart to serve, has the inspiration to do so and has the ability and the willingness to do so. So just want to thank everyone for the opportunity to sit here today and to be doing this. It's been a pleasure. It's been an honor for me. And, you know, no matter what happens in the future, I think that I really do believe that the people who represent the city, who are blamed for any problems that occur and, you know, are really responsible to handle everything and anything that goes on should be here at City Hall while City Hall is open. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any follow-up comments? Otherwise, I'll make mine. So my position is simple. I do not support the proposal as we see it. I don't support any component of it. What I'd like to do, however, because it is no secret that I am killing myself to be here. I have a full-time job. The role of Mayor is incredibly heavy. It is heavier than I think anybody expected, especially at a time when your city is going through several evolutions. And I concur with what Commissioner Cruz has said. It is important for accountability. You want to be here when things are happening so you can keep an eye on what's happening. The reality is, most of us come here at four or five or six, and more than half of the staff is probably gone. And I have to operate with a very bare minimum situation. But I understood that walking in. So, again, I do not support the proposal as presented because it is a significant jump. However, I do support a conversation in the near future of some moderate increase that will support the next generation of elected officials. To be more specific, this benefit, if it were ever to come to fruition, I'm comfortable with it not applying to myself, but rather to any future members. This way eliminates any talk appearance of it being a self-serving decision. But let me just be absolutely clear. I really do think that we need to be present when things are happening. And the expectations of us of as elected officials is incredible. If people only knew everything that happened. But how can we do that when we don't have our own staff? When, until very recently, we don't have our own office? And by the time I get to City Hall, it's already four or five in the evening. You combine that with everything else, our multiple roles that we hold in addition to members of the commission of the city. And this is not me complaining, I'm just stating the facts. And I understood what I signed up for. That is why I'm saying that I am not comfortable with any benefit for me. There is not a single person in this room that would not agree for more accountability. Ask yourself, how can there be more accountability when your elected officials are not here during the day? That is the question that needs to be asked. That is a much longer conversation that needs to be had. But I don't want the air of impropriety, the air that the decision I make is in any way self-serving. So that is a conversation I'll have for the future elected officials. And that concludes my comment on the proposal. I do have questions about the actual budget. Can we can we turn to the actual budget? And ladies and gentlemen, if we could look at the updated CIP budget. I'm sorry, I apologize. I want to make sure everybody had a chance to speak. Was there any follow-up comments on this? All right. So I do want to ask staff, because there were a couple items here that I want to make sure I understand. This is the proposed CIP budget. We do have an item here, if you look under, are there page numbers? I don't see page numbers. Under Fire Station Five, Generator Chiller and Fuel Tank Replacement, it went from $25,000 to $725,000. I just want to make sure I understood what that increase was so we can make sense of it. Yes, thank you so much.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, my esteemed colleagues, members of the public. My name is Mario Guzman, Director of Public Works. So the $25,000 this year appropriated was for the design of that. The actual replacement of a chiller and generator, that's the $750,000. The actual physical replacement of a chiller and generator.
Why are we replacing the chiller when we have no other use for the chiller except perhaps City Hall and maybe one other building? What is the long-term plan for it, is basically what I'm asking?
This is for Fire Station Five to ensure that the AC is working there. It's at its useful life, so we want to be proactive, replacing the unit. For Fire Station Five, correct?
Yes, for Fire Station, well, it's housed in Fire Station Five. I just want to make sure, because I'm a little confused, it's new? It's a new building? Did something happen recently?
No, Fire Station Five isn't a new building.
Ten years old.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I I'm confusing it. The chiller plant.
You're thinking of Station One and the district energy plant.
Yes.
That is not this.
This is separate from that, because it says chiller and perhaps it's a different chiller.
Correct. The Fire Station Five and has a chiller at that that building.
All right.
So it's chiller.
So this is entirely separate from.
Yeah, separate, end of its useful life. We want to replace it before it goes bad, because that's where our EOC is at, Emergency Operations Center.
Yes.
So hurricane purposes, want to be proactive.
Excellent, excellent. All right, I did not know the AC was in that situation.
And while it's there, we have mobilization of construction costs. The generator as well needs to be replaced. So we just put the emphasis on Fire Station Five.
Okay, great. And that will be servicing the EOC component?
Correct.
Okay. Let me ask also about Fire Station Three. If I'm not mistaken, this is the oldest fire station in the city. The digital sign is so decrepit. I was a little disappointed, but perhaps I'm not misunderstanding this correctly. What is the plan for the digital sign at Fire Station Three? Is it upcoming? Are we foregoing it temporarily? What's just the big picture plan?
I think big picture initially, we're waiting for our branding to be finalized. So when we roll out signs across the city, they all have the same brand. And we don't have one particular sign for Fire Station Three, a different one for the entrance to the city. We want to have that uniformity.
Is this the digital signs? Is it the same thing or is it different?
I believe it was for the digital as well, if I'm not mistaken.
Okay, all right. So please keep me posted on that. I would love to know what happens. Like I said, this is in District Four and it is really decrepit. And it's just not a good representation of the city. Commissioner Kelly?
Can I just piggyback on?
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, I know. Andrew and I have had some conversations within the last probably six months about that sign. And I know there were some kind of wanting to delay it for the branding of it. And I I had told Andrew to, I would like to see it get budgeted even without the branding, like what are we going to do at, you know, the water treatment plant? Like we have a sign, a digital sign there. We have other digital signs in the city. And I don't want to delay that sign for the what-ifs or wait for the fire station to be renovated. And that's, that keeps getting put off and pushed off and and delayed. And so, you know, that's a something that was brought up many times to me by, you know, different residents in District Four. So why, why does District Four have such a junky sign? You can't read it. Somebody has to go out there from the fire station or from the city and change the lettering. And so, you know, that's something that I have kind of pushed staff in the in the backend to to make that a priority. And so thank you, Mayor, for bringing that up. I think it's important. I think that, you know, yeah, maybe we're, it's not going to be fancy and have the branding, but a digital sign that's, we don't have to go out there and and put a wooden sign up there with activities that are coming up and and putting the lettering. I just think that it's, I I think that that's something that it needs to be budgeted, it needs to be prioritized.
Thank you, Commissioner, for that support. I couldn't agree more. My ask of staff is, if it's possible to get it in this budget, please explore it. If really not, I mean, after you've tried, then I understand. All right. Commissioner Kelly, did you have any other follow-up to that?
No, just thank you for bringing that up because it's something that's.
Absolutely. Commissioner Hay?
I do agree with that. That sign is is awful. But just to be clear, we're not waiting on the the grant funding like we are for the roads, you know, to continue what we're doing with the roads. We we kind of on hold to some degree as far as the the grant monies that are coming forward, but not the sign. This is totally separate, right? We're not waiting, you say you're waiting on branding.
Yeah, so what we don't want to do is put signs up and then, you know, get with marketing arts. And then we have branding. And now this is the new signs for the city across the board. And then turn them all up. I mean, I'll definitely, we're going to look into it and I'll give you an update where we have digital signs. But that's separate and apart from.
But I just wanted to make clear that that the signs and the road are two separate entities. That correct, Deputy?
Yeah, the signs are separate from road paving or any of the work we're doing in the roads. Yes, correct.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I just have one more follow-up question, or actually, it's in a slightly different topic. I see here on the page right before, at the very bottom, the Veterans Park Cameras. I see that it's it's listed as blank. Could we, could you tell me the backstory to the Veteran Park Cameras? Because I've had many conversations with many veterans. I'm hearing stories of some unfortunate situations occurring around that area. I know those cameras would be helpful. It's just the page right before.
Yeah, I see it. Let me, although we're in charge of the CIP, that segment is by different project managers, not on the Works Department.
Okay.
But I will find out and.
I would appreciate the update.
It also could be planned out in a future year.
This is only seen through two years.
Well, I don't know, so that's why I'm asking.
Yes, so that is potential.
All right, let me know the plan or let us know of the plan.
Will do.
All right, thank you so much. I'll reserve my comments there for now. I want to make sure all my colleagues have an opportunity to ask any other questions pertaining to the budget or the millage. Commissioner Cruz?
Thank you, Mayor. That was really excellent for you to catch the AC chiller. Since you're still here, Mario, is there any potential way to make that a little bit more cost-effective? I know that the chiller has been something that's been talked about before. And again, thank you, Mayor, for bringing it up. But besides this building and understanding that the new Town Square doesn't appear to be willing to use that in their future development, thinking long-term, I mean, we're replacing it, it's $750,000, correct?
Correct.
And so how long ago did we originally put the chiller in?
Just want to clarify that there's two different chillers. So the Police Department has a chiller, the Fire Department has a chiller. Town Square has a chiller plant, which is attached to Fire Station One. What we're talking about here is at Station Five, out on Gateway and.
Three different chillers and three different locations.
Right, and that one was constructed in, I think, roughly in 2009. So it's already past 10-plus years. So there, this is something that was a planned project. They've escalated up a little bit further to make sure that it gets done, make sure it's in functioning because we can't have that building go down without having air conditioning in the generator.
And as far as being cost-saving measures, we're doing it now while it's still running. So we get to go out to bid, evaluate it, discuss it with contractors. Heaven forbid that goes bad. You just got to get it replaced. You're not looking at that. It's an emergency repair and those are significantly more. So just having the control now to replace it prior to it going bad when we're not in a pinch and we're desperate to get it replaced because it's the EOC and, you know, backup generator. So right now we have control because we have the time, we want to get it done. But we have the control to look at different contractors and go out to bid and meet different contractors.
And to your point, Commissioner Cruz, obviously, when we go out to bid, we always strive to try and come in. We give you a conservative budget to make sure that we hope to come in under that. So it's in these days, it's a little hard with the pricing, construction pricing is all over the place. So we'll make sure we do our best to try and come in under that budget as well.
Thank you. So there is just curious, because I'm not familiar with that. I'm not an engineer, so would it be possible if the only reason why we're spending $750,000 is for the air conditioning? Is that correct?
Air conditioning and generator, backup generator.
Generator, okay. So is there any way to maybe have a regular air conditioning where we could maintain it and have a generator where we don't have to use a chiller? And therefore, we might not have to spend that much money?
I chilled. Are you asking if it's cheaper to have a traditional AC versus? A chiller AC?
You want to have chiller AC. It's one of the more efficient ways. If it were to go bad, heaven forbid, I can get a tractor trailer to to connect to the building and cool down the building. Once you go to a DX system and you have inside units and the outside units, it's just more components. Initially, chillers are always, the capital outlay is significantly more. Long-term life of it, it is less, less maintenance across the board. It's just one of those items where it's reached the end of its life cycle, 2009, and we're catching it. But we will not have to worry about that for a good 10 to 12 years. Whereas a DX system, high maintenance costs and life cycle is significantly less.
All right, thank you, Mario.
All right. Anything else from my colleagues on the budget or the millage rate? Mario and team, I just want to thank you for being proactive when it comes to the EOC because I know the service is the EOC as well. I know hurricane season is coming and we do not want to be put in that situation. So thanks, everybody. All right, Vice Mayor?
Yeah, just a quick question about, for Oyer Park, we have some funds allocated for the the dredge channel. So I I know we've been waiting on that for quite some time. Are we? Is that going to happen this fiscal year?
So that is a project, we're budgeting the money, we're not the lead on this project, it's the county. The county is, we're actually just contributing money to the county to do that project. So we're still waiting on them to execute on that. We can't get, I can get you an update on timing of that, for sure.
Okay, no, I know, that that's good.
It's been, it's been delayed. I know it was delayed, it was supposed to happen already. Obviously, with our new boat ramp, I think we all love to see the channel dredged. It definitely needs it and the county is working towards that.
Okay, so we're allocating some funds to assist. And then for the fishing pier, so I know, I just want to put out there because I know there's been a lot of dialogue about that fishing pier being replaced because I know it was torn down when we we did in Oyer Park. So I like this, I'm happy to see that those funds are there. And when when will that get started this fiscal year, the planning and design?
Design this year. We're about 30% design plans, looking to hopefully seek funding for 60, 90. And then once we get the plans, we'll come back to commission for funding for construction.
Okay, perfect. And then last, last thing is, I know we had discussed previously, we had an individual from the Parks and Rec Board talk about like an annual party for all the advisory board members that I guess we used to do. I would like to see that come into this fiscal year to show appreciation for all of our volunteers that do sign up on board meetings. So I know we had discussed that. I think we all agreed to that last time. So I think it is important to make sure that, you know, that does move forward.
100%. I'm going to just jump in real quick. So I've been working with our marketing and events team. We have heard you guys loud and clear and the advisory boards loud and clear. Our plan in January is to roll out a Boynton Gives Back campaign that kind of ties together all the things that the community is doing, the residents are doing, our employees are doing. Because there's so many amazing things that are happening, including volunteering on our advisory boards. And I want to, we we all want to highlight and emphasize and appreciate all of our volunteers. So there will be a, we've actually budgeted for it, it's in Gabby's budget and the events budget.
Okay, so it's.
To do an amendment, yep.
Perfect, thank you, Gavin. That's all I have, Mayor, thanks.
Thank you. So we've heard from staff, we've heard from the public, we've heard from the commission. No, it's all right, go ahead.
Okay, super quick. I I wanted to refresh our memory about the Senior Advisory Board and how we wanted to have asked staff like several times to provide a little bit of funding so that they can have a little bit of funding for the board to use kind of the way that Delray does. Have we been able to incorporate that into the budget? And I think we discussed it at the workshops, if I'm not mistaken.
I know we discussed discussed it in your agenda review and and I I got sick the last week or so. So no, it's something I will discuss with staff and we'll we'll talk it over. And maybe if we do have a place for it, we can make an amendment going forward. If if the consensus from the commission is fine with adding funds to the Senior Advisory Board, is that correct? I'm not even sure, does, how does that?
Yeah.
Could we add funds to the board?
A little bit more of how it works.
Can we add funds to the for the Senior Advisory Board to vote off to disperse?
I'm sorry, can I jump in? So the advisory boards do not have authority to spend city dollars. I'm sorry, can I jump in? So the advisory boards do not have authority to spend city dollars. However, we can budget in the scene, in the Recreation Department through the senior center to do so. But it's not through the advisory boards.
And from a legal perspective, I have no issue. Usually I'm the last one to ask about money.
Thank you. And then one, one more thing I wanted to discuss. I know, Mayor, you mentioned the Veterans Park earlier. And I've had constituents come up to me and ask for benches. Obviously, we have historical insensitive benches where people might not want to sit on because it might be feel disrespectful. But is there any way that maybe we could add regular benches so that when we have events, we have a lot of events there? Is it possible to maybe add a couple of benches to the Veterans Parks so that when people want to go in there, they would be able to sit in regular, regular benches? I don't think they're too expensive.
No, that's not going to be an issue. Just if you can send me a follow up email, just so I can get with Casey and we can discuss and try to find the appropriate vendor. I do, but before we go further, I know there was kind of, it was a little bit mixed and I don't want to kind of beat a dead horse, but I know the pay allowances. Commissioner Hay, you had mentioned that you would like see something phased in or something not in the form of this. But then I know I heard that we don't want the clothing, we don't want the vehicle. But I need to note is do you guys want to leave the office stipend or do you want to remove everything? Because it was, it was mixed. I heard that it was two members and then there was some, a little bit ambiguity and just for staff reasons, myself and Mara, I just want to know whether or not are we removing all of the allowances or is the office and HSA staying? I just need clarity because we're going to have to make those amendments and bring back whatever the commission's desire is.
My position is all three of the proposed increases are out. That is my position. Additionally, I said I'm willing to have a conversation for future compensation. That is okay, I said. Commissioner Hay then Commissioner Kelly.
My position would be I would go with a 6% increase rather than the amount that was stated and proposed.
Well, if, if we went with a percentage, we would have to do it in the form of an ordinance, sir. If we went with the, the office, that's going to be in the form of probably about 800 increase per month. So from a percentage standpoint, you're probably looking at about probably about 30 something percent is what it would end up being if you kept the office stipend. But if we did it from a percentage standpoint, which has increased it to your base salary, that would have to be in the form of an ordinance which would require a first and second reading. If you did it in any form of allowance, it would be a resolution and require only one vote.
Then let it stay like this.
Okay.
All right, Commissioner Kelly?
Mayor, I agree with you that the three allowances that I do not agree to the three allowances and that we can discuss further the potential for an ordinance on any salary increases.
All right, City Manager, you have clarity?
With Commissioner Hay, you, all three off?
All three.
Okay. All right. Yes, good to go. Thank you.
All right, Mara, were you about to say something?
So I have four, the clothing, the car, the office and the HSA. So you're saying no to all four?
I'm saying no to all.
I would really like to, if we can hold one second, I would really like to advocate for the health component. Last year I went to the hospital due to stress. I was at urgent care recently, like this is not something that we're having pocketed. This is something that is going to help our health and wellbeing. And I don't think that it's reasonable to not include that. So I would like for us to just kind of have that into consideration. It is health. We all need to have health. You know, we give our staff raises every year. We're going to go through that in a little bit later. Every single year, it's been 20 years that the commission hasn't really had a change. And at least a little bit of a health component. I don't think that harms anybody in any way, shape or form, and it doesn't cost anybody anything. It's going to be budget neutral. So I did want to bring that up because some people do, might have health issues that they might need to take care of. So I think that it would be reasonable to do that. But again, it's up to the board.
Thank you, Commissioner. Would any member like to respond? Commissioner Kelly?
I do not use the city health insurance, so I am not eligible for the HSA, so I will not be accepting those funds. So just throwing that out there that for me, it's not applicable, but I understand that if there are other members who are on the city health plan and can utilize the HSA, it is a benefit. It's a, it's a benefit to them. And so I'm kind of neutral on that one because it's, it's, it doesn't affect me. I'm not taking those funds, so.
All right, Commissioner Hay?
I agree with Commissioner Kelly. I would not receive those funds.
Okay, Vice Mayor, any thoughts on that request?
No, I mean, I made my statement clear about the HSA and the office stipend. You know, Commissioner Kelly, I think it's funny that, you know, you're opposed to healthcare, you know, for people. Yet your husband got a job and a promotion.
Whoa, whoa, whoa.
Well, wait, I, I did not, I did not oppose.
Ladies and gentlemen, let's pause for one moment, all right? Vice Mayor, I'm going to ask, you can say your comments without directing it to any particular individual.
Yeah.
Generalize your comments.
I think everyone should have access, you know, to, to healthcare, right? Like I think everyone should be, if we have someone who's going through some medical issues and this can make or break them, like I think that's important, right? So like I, I, I think, you know, I just. Yeah, I'll, I'll reserve my comments. You know, I don't want to dive into this. I'll wait for another meeting to dive into this because I just.
All right, I'm going to turn now, thank you, Vice Mayor. I'm going to turn now to Commissioner Kelly to respond.
Yeah, I just want to respond. I, I in no way said that anyone should not have access to health insurance or the HSA. My comment was strictly that those are funds that I would not be taking. I am fine with the HSA funds staying in there because they do benefit other members of the commission. So please, that is my comment. I support other people who need the HSA and use the city health insurance. I was strictly saying that I will not be utilizing those funds, nor do I utilize the city health insurance, period.
All right, any further response? I'm going to also support Commissioner Cruz with the HSA. I'm okay with that. I don't particularly have a need for it myself, but I do support if members of the commission need to use it absolutely. It is for your health and that is priority. And I don't think that's really a question for me. Okay, any other further comments or can we proceed? Staff, you have clarity on the direction?
Yes, Mayor, we do. Thank you. It's a no to three out of the four by HSA staying.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
All right, ladies and gents, it is 7:38. We have a very long agenda, so we need to move forward. We've heard from the public, we've heard from my colleagues. I'll open the floor now for a motion and we're going to, let's vote first on proposed resolution number R 23-106. This is for the proposed millage rate. Again, for the general fund for fiscal year 2324, I'll entertain a motion to approve as presented.
So moved.
We have a motion from Commissioner Kelly and a second from Commissioner Hay. Is there any further discussion on this item? Seeing none, all those in favor, excuse me, let's do a roll call vote. I think that would be ideal for something of this significance. City Clerk, if you could begin with the roll call vote.
Commissioner Kelly?
Yes.
Commissioner Hay?
Yes.
Commissioner Cruz?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Turkin? Mayor Pensilva?
Yes.
And a roll call vote, the motion passed unanimously.
And just for the record, I'll just announce that the proposed millage rate is 12.29% above the computed rollback rate of 6.9907. Thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. We're now going to look at proposed resolution number R 23-106. This is for the adoption of the tentative budget with the amendments that have been discussed and agreed upon on this on this meeting. May I have a motion to approve the budget as presented with the amendments previously agreed upon? Yes. All right, we have a motion from Vice Mayor Turkin.
Want a clarity?
Yes, sir.
Will you repeat that last part? I didn't quite get that.
So we're going to approve the budget with the amendments, that is to remove all those other things that we've discussed with the exception of the HSA. All right. So the motion was made by Vice Mayor. Is there a second?
Mayor, just. I'm sorry?
Is there a second?
Second for discussion.
Yes, go ahead.
I just wanted to, just wanted to reiterate that our milit rate is going to stay at 7.85%, which was what we did last year to decrease it. So last year we had a significant decrease in the milit rate of the city and we're maintaining that today. So just wanted to put that on the record because there were comments earlier about taxes increasing and that is inaccurate. We're maintaining the tax rate the same and the tax rate was decreased last year to one of the largest amounts it's ever been decreased. So thank you.
All right, thank you. So you made the second, Vice Mayor made the motion with the amendment. If there's nothing else, let's begin the roll call.
Commissioner Kelly?
Yes.
Commissioner Hay?
Yes.
Commissioner Cruz?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Turkin?
Yes.
Mayor Pensilva?
Yes.
And a roll call vote, the motion passed unanimously.
All right, thank you, everybody. That concludes item two A. We're going to move on to item two E and then followed by item two F. Item two E is proposed resolution number R 23-106. This is the fiscal year 2324 fire assessment fee. And who do we have from staff to briefly open the item? Ms. Frederickson?
Hi, good evening, Mara Frederickson, Director of Financial Services. I do not have a presentation for this, but I'm happy to answer any questions. We are maintaining that the annual assessment for this remain the same at $120 per residential unit.
No change. All right, is there any questions for Ms. Frederickson from members of the commission? Commissioner Kelly?
Mara, if you could please explain as it pertains to the fire assessment, there is a hardship application that is available to residents. Can you please review that for us?
Sure, the hardship application is advertised after the second budget hearing. So it'll be advertised on the city website as of September 15th, when the, it is approved on September 14th. We usually give residents about a month to submit those applications with any supporting documentation. We do send out the applications to any of the residents that have previously received the hardship. Typically I receive about 30 to 40 applicants every year for hardship. And it can be for disability, senior, there's a poverty level hardship. And I think there's a widow and veterans hardship as well, so. And that again will be advertised on the city website and we will send that out to anybody who's received it in the past.
Thank you, Mara.
All right, any other questions for Mara on this topic from my colleagues? Seeing none, let's turn now to public comments specifically on the fire assessment fee and nothing else but the fire assessment fee. Let's begin with those in person, followed by those online. Let me switch the timer. Please begin when you're ready and state your name for the record.
Cindy Falca de Corado. I never consented to $120 fee and I don't see why I should have to fill out a form to not qualify or to qualify. First of all, taxes are volunteer. If you've done anything, your homework and you know how our country's really ran, it's supposed to be volunteer even though they've put a hardship on we the people. There's people that cannot afford $120, even though they might not be in hardship to the dollar amount or to the age specification for this hardship to not pay. It's not fair for people who make $200,000 a year, they pay 120 and people who make maybe $50,000 a year have to still pay 120. There should be some kind of balance, some kind of percentage that each home does not have to pay $120. It's just a real hardship. That's, that's groceries for a week. I don't know how your bills are going, but I can walk out of the store and I don't get anything for $100. So it shouldn't be on just whether or not your age or whether or not you're a widow, which we know that's way below what probably income normally is for anyone. It's a hardship to any family that's struggling, that might have a family of three or four, but make over that dollar amount just by a dollar. So I, I think it should be reassessed. First of all, I don't want to pay it at all. I do not comply, I do not consent. But if you're going to do something like this, you need to be fair to all the people. And you need to consider the dollar amounts of the incomes of the people in their homes. And you need to do it on a percentage, not on a flat fee. Thank you.
All right, next speaker?
Susan Oyer, Seacrest Estates. I was in those meetings years ago when they put this into effect. And while maybe we do need to reevaluate the sunsetting of this and maybe we really need to relook at the qualifications for these exemptions. I do totally agree with this fee because I sat there and I know why this was put into effect. And I fully support the reason why this went into effect. Maybe people should go back and look at the history of why this fee was put in. I'm all for it. But again, I think maybe as Cindy alluded, maybe you're within a dollar or a very small amount of what the exemptions are. And maybe we should be reevaluating, especially with the current economic situation, what the exemption level qualifications are. And that is something that can easily be done. I think that would be fair. I think we could look at maybe, you know, if it's an individual versus a company. If you own multiple homes, maybe we really need to stop and think, why are we charging somebody who owns 10 homes $120 per house? Maybe there should be a scale down. There, there's ways to work around this, but yet still solve the problem. And this is, if you look at the history of why this was put into effect, I 100% support this. But yes, I do think, and you're right, there's no taxes in the constitution. I, I've fought that fight too. But I, I think there's a way of accomplishing all sides of this, but I think this is a very important fee and worth having. But please do your homework, everyone, and go back and look why this was actually put into effect. And if it truly was supposed to be sunsetted a few years ago, then that needs to be a separate conversation because I'm all for sunsetting things. But look at why this was put into effect and it serves a purpose and it's needed. So thank you.
Thank you. All right, next speaker, please approach the podium, state your name for the record and begin when you're ready.
Donald Torker Jr. I said this last year, it's the same thing. I'm not against you spending money for the Fire Department, but when again, it should be, have to do with the millage. That's the whole purpose of having a millage rate. So based on the amount of papers house is what it is. So whatever the, the amount this comes out to be, you know, $100 for 80,000 houses or whatever we have, make it up. And then you know how, what the value of the houses are, but do it a little bit more fair. It is, I, I understand that you try to do this so that you don't raise the millage rate. So it looks like you're not raising taxes. But on lower income people, you're raising their taxes a lot more percentageally than you are of those who make a lot of money. So let's be, that's the whole purpose of millage, to do it fair and just divide it a little bit more evenly. That's why I'm, I'm, I'm all for you spending the money for the Fire Department. Just, I think it needs to be done a little bit more fairly.
Thank you. All right, next speaker, please approach the podium.
Mac McCray, 806 Northwest Fourth Street. I'm going back to what I said before. It's supposed to have been sunsetted within those seven years. You all are calling it an assessment. Forget the word assessment. What you all are doing is taxing the people of Boynton. Thank you.
All right, next speaker.
Hi, I am against the one, the.
Say your name for the record, please.
Oh, Jackie Ma. So I am against the raise for the Fire Department because if you want $750,000 already out of our budget for these chillers, now you're going to tax us even more. That's not fair to us. And I'm not going to talk on the people who can't afford it because we already know nobody can afford it. So what I'm going to say is the healthcare district, we're giving $90.58 in the tax in what you're asking on taxes to Flagler Ave in Miami. Why are we doing that? That has nothing to do with us. So why don't you take that money and, and take that off of there and put that towards the Fire Department and stop trying to get taxed us for things that don't have to do with our area. So that also includes those two schools. Because do you know on that tax paper, one of the schools, it's just for one school? And then the other one is for the school board. We already give them a fortune. And there's many people here who don't even have children in school. So take those three things off and then I would be willing to pay the, the Fire Department more money and get chillers for them because, you know, I don't have a chiller in my house, so my house could stay ice cold. And I don't have, you know, I don't even have, what did you call that thing, when the electric goes out? The generator, yeah, the generator. What kind of generator costs that kind of money? Because you can buy a generator for 3, $400 and if the Fire Department needed two of them, do two. And do we really need an electric sign? Pull that sign out if it's no good and don't have a sign at all then. Because we don't need signs all over the place. We have enough with the electric lights.
Assessment fee.
You know, the cameras that are charging us all over the place because you went a little.
The topic is only fire assessment fee.
It's still part of it because that money goes right into, out of our budget to survive. Okay, all of it is all the same. So no to the Fire Department.
Moving on to the next speaker, please approach the podium and state your name for the record.
My name is Tracy Rostolini Tabano. This'll be short and sweet. I'm an HVAC business owner. I think you need to look a little bit deeper into this chiller HVAC. I think you guys are trying to get ripped off, and I think you need to do your research before you agree to that budget. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, next speaker, again, this is specifically for the military, excuse me, the fire assessment fee.
Yeah, hi, Ernest McNally. So where's all the commission? Where, on a break?
Sir, your comments, fire assessment fee.
Yeah, I know, but I want to talk to the commission.
Proceed with the fire assessment fee. Second warning, sir.
Second warning, for what? So the fire department and the chiller, first of all, first of all, the fire department chiller, if you...
Sir, I'm, your time is expired. I was very clear with you, the topic of conversation is only the fire assessment fee. That is not related. That is, excuse me, excuse me, no! We will not violate the rules of this chamber. Thank you, sir. The rules will be upheld. Next speaker, specifically on the fire assessment fee. Is there anybody online? Let's money, let's turn to those online. Is there anybody, is there anybody with their digital hands raised?
Mr. Mayor, we have no hands raised.
All right, with that, public comments on this item is now closed. I'm going to turn now to my colleagues, if they have any questions for staff or comments regarding the fire assessment fee. Let's begin with Commissioner Kelly.
All right, I do not have any questions. Thank you.
All right, Commissioner Hay, any questions about the fire assessment fee?
No question.
All right, I have no questions for myself either, now that we've heard from the public as well as from my colleagues. I'd like to entertain a motion to approve resolution R twenty-three dash one oh nine. This is the fire assessment fee, and I'd like to ask for a roll call on this item as well. But first, let's make a four motion. Is there a motion to approve this resolution?
So moved.
Sorry.
Is, I heard the motion from Commissioner Kelly, is that correct? And a second from Commissioner Hay. City Clerk, if you could please begin with the roll call.
Commissioner Kelly?
Yes.
Commissioner Hay?
Yes.
Commissioner Cruz is absent from the dais. Vice Mayor Turkin is also absent from the dais. Mayor Penserga?
It is also a yes.
In a roll call vote, the motion passed three unanimously.
All right, three out of three. Ladies and gentlemen, I will not proceed with this meeting with all of the yelling from the chamber. This is a quorum, three out of five is majority. We're going to move on to the next item. The next item is item F. Item F is proposed resolution number one, R twenty-three dash one one zero, public hearing for the fiscal year twenty-four annual canal maintenance services special assessment. I'm going to turn now to our director here. Please introduce yourself and state your name for the record.
Good evening, this is Angela Primas, Utilities Department.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners, and public. Angela is going to give you a brief presentation on the canal assessment, so something we've discussed before, it's, nothing's changed in there, so I'm going to let Angela go ahead. So, Manny, can you pull up the...
So we are going to talk today about the canals. This is a limited area, it's two canals. One is the Lake Shore Heaven Canal, and the other one is the Lake Eden Four Canals. The reason that we are doing an assessment in these canals is because they are private. Next presentation, next slide. So the Aquatic Management Services provide monthly control of in-bases. They address issues like weed overgrowth, improved savages to the neighborhood, reduce waterway clogging, and decay vegetation, and provide stoned water drainage. Next slide, please. The proposed assessment is for the fiscal year twenty-two-three, twenty-two, twenty-four, and is an estimate seven thousand two hundred dollars, and this is for a hundred and one properties. This is going to be assessed by linear fee, and for those canals, we are proposing fifty cents for linear fee and twenty dollars with sixty-six cents for administrative fee. Do you have any questions?
None for myself. Was that the conclusion? It looks like it is. Let's turn now to my colleagues, if you have any questions. Commissioner Hay, let's begin with you, followed by Commissioner Kelly.
This is a, how much of an increase did you say was?
It is no increase from the past year, exactly the same amount.
And twenty dollars and sixty-six cents for the administrative.
This is the administrative fee commissioned, which is used to pay for the notices. We had required mailing notices and publications and newspapers. Also, we had to mail, you know, the way that this is collected now is by mail. We mailed the billings.
Is there, is there average linear footage that you use? You say fifty cents per linear foot, plus twenty dollars and sixty-six cents for administrative costs a year, but each household?
Yes, sir. So we had properties that had smaller linear footage, and we had properties that had more. So in average, it's like sixty dollars for the smallers, and it goes all the way to eighty for the biggest waterfronts. And this is measured by our GIS department. We work with our GIS department to provide that measurements.
Just across the board, or just specific for a certain area?
This is a specific, Manny, could you show me the project area, please? So it's a specific for the Lake Shore Heaven and for the Lake Eden Canal, for the waterfronts that are indicated in that project area map.
So how many people are we approximately?
A hundred and one properties, sir.
Hundred and one?
Yes, sir.
And it's an annual assessment, Commissioner? So it's annually, that's what each property might pay. And what's, Angela, do you know what the amounts are, sort of, between different properties?
It goes from sixty to a hundred and twenty, but the majority is like ninety feet waterfront.
Will it have a sunset date, or will it be for five, ten, twenty?
As long as we provide it. Right now, we are doing it year by year, and every year, we come to the commission for authorization. This is the third year. This will be the third year.
It's the cost of doing the maintenance on these canals, which is specific to those canals, nobody else, and those are private canals. So the city is just recuperating the cost of doing the services, that's it.
So it will be ongoing for those hundred and one...
One properties, yeah.
Correct.
Persons who are benefiting from this.
Correct.
Yeah. Those of us who are not, will not have this assessment.
This is a specific for this area, yes, sir.
Thank you, I'm clear.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Hay. Commissioner Kelly, we'll turn to you, followed by Commissioner Cruz.
Thank you. My only comment, this is hopefully something that will go away with the, with the bridge, the improvements that are going to happen. This assessment should resolve, I would assume, in the coming years as that project gets...
So, yes, if the bridge increases the flow and nothing else happens for overgrowth and other things in that, in those canals, then yes, this fee will go away. If you don't have to do any services, we won't be charging anything.
Okay, very good. And I have the...
I want to mention that the bridge, it won't affect positively or negatively the lake eating canals. So this, the bridge will, perhaps will benefit only Lake Shore Heaven.
Okay.
All right, anything else, Commissioner?
I, one more, so the amount for this, this canal assessment, it has this, I know you said it didn't increase. Did our expenses increase? Have they, how, because I know this is kind of an experimental thing, let's see how it goes cleaning out these canals. Are we finding that we're spending more than what the assessment is? Or are we breaking even? Are we, I just want to make sure we're not adding, you know, we're keeping it the same, but do we need to keep it the same?
The way that we are doing this assessment is we are using historical values. In other words, we are projecting for next year what we are spending now. And traditionally, those aquatic management services are continuing kind of the same prices.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner Kelly. Commissioner Cruz, questions or comments regarding the canal maintenance services assessment?
No, thank you.
All right, with that, I'm going to proceed to public comments specifically on this item. If you'd like to speak specifically on this canal assessment, very limited to this region, please approach the podium. We have two podiums, doesn't matter where we begin first. Please state your name for the record. Let me switch the timer, and begin when you're ready.
Thank you, my name is Sam Dukey. What exactly is the cleaning? The canals are really, really dirty, and especially at the end of each canal. And more than anything, the cleaning, does that include trimming of trees? There's trees that boats cannot, you know, move on into the lake from each canal. Does that include trimming of the trees? Is that private property? If, I live on Mission Hill Road, the thirty-third place neighbors that own lots across the street have trees, and they're not trimming them. Who is imposing any cleaning, any trimming of the trees? The boats are not moving, I can't move a boat out. Can you imagine yourself balancing yourself, like I have done? I've rented a, a trimmer, I rented a chainsaw, I've paid somebody to cut the trees, I've borrowed one. Imagine balancing yourself on a small boat, because people are not cleaning the canals. So what exactly, can Angela answer that? What exactly is the cleaning?
All right, sir, unfortunately, this is not a Q and A, but I would recommend they're right behind you, just ask them directly. All right, I'm sure they'd be happy to help. Thank you. We're going to move on to the next speaker. Let me just reset the time. All right, begin when you're ready, sir.
Hi, my name is Gary Fishman. I live at three five oh four Diane Drive. Our neighborhood thoroughly appreciates the city commission's support, caring, and votes for the bridge and the spraying. The city manager, assistant city managers and staff have been extremely instrumental to the progress here, and they are to be complimented. The spraying companies should be checked on by the city, as they have been standoffish to communicating with the residents. Their spraying should be monitored as to what they're spraying, and to check on its effectiveness. The ownership of the canal, it was mentioned by the assistant city manager, could be given back to the city if that would help with the bridge assessment and spraying accountability. Then we should investigate that. And many thanks to all for this discussion this evening.
Thank you. All right, let's go to those online. I see one person who would like to speak specifically on this item. All right, state your name for the record.
Yeah, hi, Ernest McNally, seven ten Northeast Seventh Street. I live on the intercoastal, and I see a lot with the bridge and the canals, and then the surrounding municipalities. And I'm not in favor of this assessment, and I think that the city has to be responsible for all the stuff that's being dumped into the intercoastal and the canals, like the twelve million gallons that was just dumped. So that's my comment.
All right, let's go to those online. Manny, do we have anybody with their digital hands raised?
Mr. Mayor, we have no hands raised.
With that, public comment on this item is now closed. I'm now going to return to my colleagues regarding this item. Do you have any final questions or comments for staff? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve resolution R twenty-three dash one one zero. May I have that motion?
So moved.
We have a motion from Commissioner Kelly, and a second from Commissioner Hay. City Clerk, if you could please begin the roll call.
Commissioner Kelly?
Yes.
Commissioner Hay?
Yes.
Commissioner Cruz?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Turkin is absent from the dais. Mayor Penserga?
Yes.
In a roll call vote, the motion passed unanimously.
Thank you so much, everyone. We're going to move on to the next item, which is two B. This is the Evergreen Compensation and Classification Study. This is a presentation by our HR Director, Tenille DeCoste. And I see we also have the Ron Williamson from Evergreen Solutions. All right, good evening and welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commission, Tenille DeCoste, Director of Human Resources and Risk Management. The last, you know, okay, the city of Boynton Beach has not had a comp and class study since two thousand and five, and it was done by MGT of America. Best practices, organizations this size should conduct a study every three to five years, and we have not done that. Human Resources contacted three agencies to conduct the comp and class study. We reached out to Evergreen, HR Compensation Consultants LLC, and MGT. Evergreen was the lowest bidder, and therefore selected to complete the comp and class study. And I'm going to turn it over to Rob Williamson, who is the expert, what he did in the study.
Thank you. Good evening. I know it's been a long meeting already, so let you know that it takes about ten minutes to get through the slides, and then obviously stop me at any point as we go along the way. But I did want to start just by saying that you have a heck of a team here, and it has been a wonderful engagement from the outset, from the kickoff call, to the in-person outreach and focus sessions, to the survey instrument that we provided to the city. The participation has been next level, and we've really enjoyed the engagement. We'll go ahead to the next slide. This is just the agenda of what we're going to cover in the slide deck, next slide. So we started with that kickoff call, as I mentioned, then we did an assessment of current conditions of the plan as it exists currently, how you go about the blocking and tackling of paying folks. And then I came on site to do orientation and focus groups with staff, and basically you hired us to do four key things. You hired us to survey the employees, you hired us to survey the market, and then step three, we put that information together, and then step four, I'm here today to report on that. Those are those two bullets there where it says to internal, or conduct an internal equity analysis. That's the surveying of the employees piece. Then we have to compare you to somebody. That's the conducted external equity analysis piece, and we'll get to that market survey piece in a moment. Next slide, please. And one more. So the compensation philosophy, it's very important right now, and one of the fastest-moving labor markets in the history of this country, that you want to be competitive to the market. As I'm telling clients around the United States now, and elected officials, policymakers such as yourself, the do-nothing option has been removed from the table. If you want to be competitive to market, if you want to eliminate or reduce turnover, if you want to eliminate the number of vacancies if you have, if you want to be competitive in the marketplace and recruit and retain the next generation of talent, you're going to have to be competitive in the marketplace. And that requires you to have a fair, flexible, and fiscally responsible pay plan. And we kept the open range as well as the step plans, and we want to move people with tenure, and we want to move them based on merit as well. Wanted to put this slide in here to talk about the employee participation piece, because we average typically about seventy percent nationwide, and we were well up over eighty percent here in Boynton, so I wanted to celebrate that. That basically means that we had a much more defensible final product to bring to you. Next slide. Couple of slides here about what we're seeing in the market relative to wage growth. If we were to extend this out with the latest data that we received from June from the Department of Labor, we would see that private sector wages are starting to moderate. But if we go to the next slide, we noticed that in the public sector, wage and benefit growth actually continues to increase. Last month, we went from four point seven to four point nine percent on wages in the public sector, and benefits went from five to five point two. So it's continuing to go up. Next slide. So the compensation review, please, the market piece. We went out to market with an approved list of market peers, those cities and counties that would be of like size, that had similar characteristics, that we find to be competitors and/or comparators, and we got data from thirteen of fifteen of them, a very robust data set. And for each one of you... And for each one of your classifications that we went out to market and compared to, we ended up with right at nine matches for that, which is here again, a very defensible data set. And for those that are outside the area, we did adjust for cost of living. Next slide, please. So this is important here for you to know. When we went out to market, we surveyed the market. Where do you stand? Are you competitive or are you not competitive? And what we found is at the 50th percentile of the market, which is not where we recommend that you stay, we believe that there are market forces that really to position yourself competitively, you should try to be above the 60th percentile of the market. But at the 50th percentile of the market, you're behind market at the minimum, midpoint and maximum. Why is the minimum important? Because when you go to post a job, that minimum salary is what you post to bring in qualified applicants. So if you're behind the market at the minimum, that tells the marketplace right off the bat that your salaries might not be competitive. And let's be honest, there's plenty of resources that qualified applicants can access now to know what competitive looks like. The midpoint is very important and I feel like it's a particular vulnerability for you. And that's where we get to, an employee has a little bit of a tenure, they have a little bit of experience, they've gained a necessary certification that they need to have in their role and you're behind market there by about 9% when we average all of those 68 job titles together. And what that tells me is that once an employee here in Boynton might get the necessary certifications or they might get a few years of experience under their belt that makes them very marketable, you'd be vulnerable to possibly lose them to one of your competitors. And we're seeing that a lot in the marketplace. So I would strongly encourage you to take care of that midpoint piece. Next slide. Key considerations, as we told the employees when I visited here back in February, that there's not a recommendation that Evergreen is going to make that would have employees make less than they're making now, which when you see that they're behind market, you know, overall on average, that wouldn't be a very wise recommendation for you if you want to be competitive in the marketplace. Hybrid parity, which I'll explain in a moment, is our methodology that we're recommending. Basically, we take employees and we move them into market competitive pay ranges. And so hybrid parity is the methodology that we're going to recommend that you do that. If you could go back to that last slide just real quick. I just want to touch on the fact that this was a collaborative process throughout and that the numbers that were approved and the budget, you know, it's not a you write the check for these increases today type of number. This actually, you know, obviously takes place throughout the course of the fiscal year. Next slide. So we're recommending that we have a 5% increase to the pay ranges to help them bring them up to market competitive, that's overall. And then where individual classification titles were farther behind market than that, we've recommended additional adjustments to the pay ranges to where now at implementation, you will have market competitive pay ranges for the city. And then we're using hybrid parity to move employees into those market competitive pay ranges. So what's hybrid parity? Hybrid parity gives employees 100% credit for the time that they've spent in their current job title. And then it gives them 25% credit for the remaining time that they've spent with the city regardless of their job title. It is a true blend and it's really meant to solve two things. One, to make you market competitive on the day of implementation. And two, to solve instances of wage compression that had begun to occur in the city. And it's occurring clients around the United States. I think I'm in 10 different states right now with 36 different engagements. And I can tell you wage compression is something that many of your cities around the United States are battling right now. Wage compression meaning, hey, I just started here at the city and you're paying me 18 bucks an hour and somebody that's been working here four years in the same position, they're making 18 bucks an hour. Those wages are compressed. What hybrid parity does is it spreads those employees out based on that blended years of service and time and classification to eliminate or greatly reduce those instances of wage compression. It brings equity back to your pay plan. Next slide. This is the money slide. This is what everybody wants to see. So you see three options here. The bring to minimum is included in the other two options. Hybrid parity, as I've just mentioned to you, and there's a brief description there in green how that is implemented. And then I wanted to put comp ratio in there as well, just so you get an understanding that we didn't go with the most expensive option. Comp ratio was by far the most expensive option. But comp ratio just keeps an employee's relationship where they are currently in their pay range. It would keep that relationship the same when we move them into a new market competitive pay range. In other words, the wage compression issues that you have now, it doesn't fix them. So it's more expensive and it doesn't fix your problem. But I just wanted to put that in there just so you see the three different options there and how we weren't recommending the most expensive one. It's basically 1% of payroll. You have different CBAs, collective bargaining agreements, WC representing white collar. If you go to the next, I believe it's BC for blue collar. Then you have fire and police. We maintained those collective bargaining agreements in the new proposed pay plan. And so the numbers that you had there, if you added up together, I think roughly were around 380,000 is what the budget impact and the budget you just approved. That honors those existing CBAs. It doesn't conflict with them. But it definitely puts your general employees and all employees in a market competitive position. What do we have left remaining for you? Well, the next thing we have to do is we have to update all of your job descriptions to make sure we have legally compliant job descriptions and that they accurately match the job title and the essential functions that your employees are performing here in service to Boynton. Then we're going to train your staff on how to properly maintain the system going forward. And then we're going to write a book where we're going to memorialize everything that we've done and the study findings and we'll present that to you and then we'll move to project closeout. And I know that was a lot of information very quickly, but Mr. Mayor, I would entertain any questions that you might have.
Well, thank you so much for that presentation and for bringing this forward. I want to turn now to my colleagues for any questions or comments. And from my understanding, this has already been budgeted for, or at least we've set aside some money for it. Let me leave it open like that. And what I'm looking for from my colleagues is which of these three options do you want to proceed with? Let's turn to my right this time, Commissioner Cruz, questions, comments? And of the three options, how would you like to proceed?
During my agenda review, it was kind of suggested by staff that the best idea would be to go with the hybrid parity. And the total cost for that is 376,000. And some of it, it's going to be the 199, it's going to be mainly for city hall staff who's non-unionized, correct?
Right.
And then the other would be for unionized staff. Okay. I would be okay with the hybrid parity.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Cruz, that was an important message.
That's okay.
Yeah, I apologize.
Just wanted to say that I would be okay with the hybrid parity plan.
All right. Well, thank you for that. Anything else?
No.
All right, let's turn now to Commissioner Hay, then Commissioner Kelly.
Yeah, I too would support the hybrid priority, but let me understand. As I stand right now, I don't see a mass exit from Boynton Beach going some other places. So what are we really saying now? Are we just below where we should be with our employees from the SARS standpoint? Or what is the motivation here? Because like I say, I don't see a mass exit from Boynton Beach. There are more factors, I would think, that would be considered other than just the financial side, the location, the area. I mean, there, so just kind of help me out here. I think you know where I'm going.
No, and it's a great question. And look, employees value many different factors when they're making an employment decision. And I start off my comments tonight by mentioning one of them. You've got a heck of a team here. You know, when it comes to a work environment here and the leadership team here, they are, they've earned the reputation of being one of the best and people want to work for the best. You know, like the old Gallup study said, employees don't leave companies, they leave bad managers, right? And so you have a good team here, you have good policies in place, you have good benefits in place. But the reality is you're behind the market in all three key areas, minimum, midpoint and maximum. So while you might not be experiencing a significant increase in turnover and that market position isn't manifesting itself in employees leaving, it is manifesting itself in the number of applicants that you have, the number of quality applicants that you have here. It's far less than it's been historically. I think Tenille can comment on the number of vacancies that you currently have. But I think there's also an indication that employees are looking to see what is going to be the result of this study as well, maybe in making some of their employment decisions. Right now, retention is more difficult than ever in the public sector. It's more competitive than ever in the public sector. So Commissioner, if you're not getting your salaries into a market competitive position, especially given the region that you're in, then you're putting yourself at a competitive disadvantage.
And if I may, Commissioner, if you recall prior to me just being hired here, we had over 120 vacancies. And, you know, we did the big career fair and that's because, in my opinion, is you weren't up to market, number one, your benefits weren't up to par and we really weren't selling Boynton like we should be. So taking all that into consideration, yes, maybe you're not seeing a big exit now, but we flipped over the benefits, we enriched our benefits, we're enriching everything. Now, this is the next step to make us marketable so we can retain our employees and attract new employees for those hard to fill positions that we can't fill. And I think we have about 30 vacancies right now.
Yeah, and I kind of want to piggyback off what Tenille is saying. Whenever Tenille came on, we had 124 vacancies and we've reduced that substantially. And to answer your question, why are we doing this? Because we're not a reactive organization. We're a proactive organization. And I'm going to do whatever it takes to make sure I retain my employees. Recruitment is not the cornerstone of organizations, retention is. You keep your employees, you keep your talent here and you value it and you let them know they're appreciated. So to answer your question, you provide them purpose, happiness and financial security.
I can appreciate that. But let's say that we were to go with the hybrid priority. Where would that put us with that list that you gave us? Would we be somewhere in the middle, at the top? Or we make the list of what, how does that stack us up with the rest of the surrounding cities and municipalities? We got 39 in Palm Beach County.
That puts you right in the middle, Commissioner.
Right in the middle.
Yes, sir. And we would recommend that you strongly consider moving forward, evaluating at the 60th or even 70th percentile.
And this isn't, I'm sorry, Commissioner.
And how often do we evaluate this? Is it every three years?
Well, at the report that I'm writing now, I would say that if you have, you know, Tenille notices certain classifications that you're having a hard time filling and there might be market conditions that indicate that you need to make a move on one or two classifications specifically, obviously that's going to be ongoing, right? But for a market study where you're going out to observe the market every two to three years and a full-blown compensation and classification study like the one that we've done every three to five.
Okay. Mayor, if I may, a little off track here. Thank you very much. We've gone through about three or four items now and have a concern about our Vice Mayor. Is he okay?
I don't really want to divulge his personal situation, but he is going through a personal situation. I just want to leave it there.
Okay, that's good enough. That's good. I'm just concerned.
Yeah, I understand likewise.
Thank you.
Commissioner, was there anything else?
No, that's it.
All right, let's, thank you. Let's turn to Commissioner Kelly.
Thank you, Mayor. Tenille, I just want to thank you for bringing this up. I think that it is always important that we're looking at making sure that we're where we should be as far as market rate for attracting new employees to our city. So I just want to thank you for taking charge of this. It's my understanding this is something that was done a really long time ago.
2005.
And the city elected, the prior administration elected not to follow those rules or not to follow the recommendations. And so we are really behind the eight ball. And I feel like we're catching up and I think we're doing a great job with your leadership and your recommendations that we're getting on track to making sure our current employees are, you know, are compensated fairly and adequately and also with our benefits, you know, making sure that they're not working just to pay for health insurance. So I appreciate that. So no, I'm comfortable with the recommendations of staff. This is your business, so I'm not going to tell you how to do your business. But so if you, if staff recommends that, then that's, you know, that's, I'm going to support you on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. I heard already from Commissioner Cruz, are there any follow-up comments for my colleagues? If not, I want to turn to public comments specifically on this item, after which we'll come back to the dais and I'll entertain a motion on the floor. All right, if you'd like to speak specifically on this item, now's the time to approach the podium, after which we'll go to those online. Again, this is specifically about the Evergreen Compensation and Classification Study. All right, as always, state your name for the record, begin when you're ready.
Cindy Falco de Carrado. I'm a little perplexed in regards to why we outsourced a marketer. I would like to know how much we paid for a marketer and why we needed a marketer. I know that you cannot answer me that and I will ask for FOIA, but it is perplexing because you are a building, you have human resources here on property. I know that there was a job fair recently, but unfortunately, it's not advertised as looking for employees for working within the city. And I had a friend that came to that job fair. He was a half hour before closing and they wouldn't let him in. And he was very qualified for the position that he was going to apply for. So I don't know if it's a defeatist thing with the people that have been here a long time, they don't want new faces. I don't, I don't know where the problem lies, but to spend, I don't know what we spent to Evergreen for this marketing, and I hate that word, hybrid. If you know anything about what's going on in the world and the spiritual realm, hybrid is not a good thing. It's very demonic, but that's besides the point. So I just wanted to bring that to attention and I would like to know information of what we spent and why we spent and why when people do come for a job, they're discouraged when they are qualified. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Let's go to those online. All right, sir, please approach the podium. This is specifically about the compensation study.
Thank you. Ernest Magali, 710 Northeast 7th Street, Boynton Beach. So I don't agree with the plan the way it is. I have some feelings that there should be different criteria used. And I don't like the fact that you're copying. I don't like the fact that you're copying from cities that have a lot of problems. I'll give you an example, Delray, Riviera Beach, Palm Beach Gardens, a lot of employee hiring problems, et cetera. I looked at some of the things that you did in your study to sink, let's see what we can do to improve. So basically what happened is the last human resource person is gone and then you brought in someone from Delray who's kind of trying to bring in all of Delray's procedures for hiring, et cetera. I'm talking about that.
Sir, I will not let you impugn any member of this staff.
Who's impugning anybody?
Staff, sir, get to the point. Get to the point about the Evergreen study.
Unbelievable. So, so it's also my opinion that for 87,000 people that we know that live here, I think we're approaching 800 employees already in Boynton Beach. I mean, it's a huge amount of people. So I don't agree that you need to keep hiring, hiring. And I don't agree with the fact of copying municipalities who have failed programs of compensation and say, well, that's what we want to do. I mean, if you want to increase people's salary, do it on your own. Don't try and copy Delray, don't try and copy Riviera, just do it on your own. There's nothing wrong with doing that. But what I don't like is when I read the criteria that you say, you say, well, we're comparing it to Delray, to Palm Beach Gardens, to Riviera Beach, to this and that, they have serious problems. You know where I'm coming from. And all I'm saying is that I would prefer, when you talk about a compensation package, that it rests within this city. You guys come up with it, you don't talk about what Delray is doing, you don't talk about Riviera Beach is doing, especially Riviera Beach. What a troubled, what a troubled city that is.
All right, next speaker.
Hi, Jackie Mond. Okay, so I agree with him 100%. And I was trying to look at the chart and the chart said that we were paying like 59,000 or something now and that he wants to up this to 199,000. That's huge. That's like crazy. That's like not acceptable. And then Evergreen, what did he mean by Evergreen? Because if you did your Because if you did your research on Evergreen, you would know that Evergreen is owned by the Clinton Foundation. So is Clinton Foundation paying for these salaries? And what does he really mean by that? And what, you know, that jump in the money is a huge amount of money, and that's going to come out of our pockets, right? So that comes out of our pockets. So that needs to go back to research because we can't do that. Sorry, we can't pay for funerals, and we can't do that. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, we're going to move on to those online. Is there anybody else online who would like to speak on this item? Many, how many people do we have with their digital hands raised?
Mr. Mayor, we have no hands raised.
With that, public comments on this item is now closed. Again, this is item 2B, this is the Evergreen Compensation and Classification Study. I'm going to turn now back to my colleagues if there's any follow-up questions or comments. Let's begin on my right, Commissioner Cruz, for staff or the consultant. No comments, moving on to Commissioner Hay, followed by Commissioner Kelly. Questions or comments? All right, with that, I'd like to ask for a motion to approve. However, we need to make a determination on which of those three options. I heard very clearly one person said with the hybrid parity option. This is the middle option of the three, and I see multiple head nods. If you could make a motion to move forward with the hybrid parity. All right, we have a motion from.
For parity, yeah, second.
All right, I heard a motion from Commissioner Cruz, a second from Commissioner Kelly. All those in favor of the motion say aye. Aye, all those who oppose the motion say no. The ayes have it, the motion passes unanimously. Thank you so much, both of you, we appreciate your service, and thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, we are now moving on to items, yes, thank you.
This is Catherine Matos, Assistant City Manager. I would just like to chime in that I started here in Boynton Beach three and a half years ago. When I started here, my first question to HR was, have we done a class and comp study? We had not since 2005. Can I tell you that the quality of the employees that we have here is based on our benefits and our compensation packages? And I applaud our new HR department for taking this on, our new city manager for taking this on. Thank you so much for making us market competitive. The option that was voted on tonight is not a cure-all, it's a phase. It's an incremental phase, but it gets us somewhat there. In Boynton Beach, I have so much pride in the city that we have, the city that we are, the community that we have, I love this community, I love the staff that we work with. It is just an incredible place. And let me tell you, we're working in incremental phases to get better and better and better. This is one of those huge steps forward to get us on the map, to make us competitive, to make us on the mark. So thank you so, so much. That's it, thank you.
And Mr. Mayor, if I could.
Absolutely.
On the record to say that Evergreen Solutions is not affiliated or owned by the Clinton Foundation. Just wanted to get that cleared up.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, we have many things on the agenda, and I'm trying to move thoroughly and expeditiously. There is one person that's waiting for a proclamation. If there's no objection from my colleagues, if it's all right with you, I'd just like to present the proclamation and not keep this person here longer than they need to. I appreciate the patience. This is item 3C, this is the proclamation for Hunger Action Month. This is to Feeding South Florida, naming September 2023 as Hunger Action Month. The proclamation will be accepted by Shelby Calderon from Feeding South Florida. Let me read the proclamation into the record, and I'll come down and present it to you. The proclamation reads as follows. Whereas since 1981, Feeding South Florida has worked to end hunger in the city of Boynton Beach by providing our community in need with immediate access to nutritious food. Whereas hunger does not discriminate, it knows no race, religion, or age. In South Florida, approximately 1 million individuals face hunger. Food should not be an impossible choice for the community of the city of Boynton Beach. Whereas Feeding South Florida leads hunger and poverty advocacy efforts in our community while transforming lives through innovative programming and education that provides economic growth and overall well-being. Whereas the city of Boynton Beach is therefore committed to supporting Feeding South Florida so that together we can achieve a hunger-free South Florida. Now, therefore, be it resolved that I type in surga, Mayor of the city of Boynton Beach, Florida, to hereby proclaim September 2023 as Hunger Action Month. So thank you so much, and thank you for being patient. Let me come down, let's give her a round of applause and the great work that they do.
Mayor, while you're doing that, can I just say a few things? So I have, my family and I have gone to Feeding South Florida a couple of times to volunteer. And I looked at their calendar for September, and all of the slots are full for all of their volunteer efforts for September. But I just want to challenge the commission and city staff. I'm going to go with my family on October 14th. I think it would be really cool for city staff and the commission to fill the rest of those spots and to support Feeding South Florida. They have so many amazing programs from, and I'm sure Shelby will talk about it, but from, you know, feeding our seniors and feeding, you know, our, you know, just our, filling that food void that we have in the city and also through Palm Beach County. So I just challenge everyone to get out there, it's a couple of hours. They have volunteer hours every day of the week. But I will be there on October 14th, and I would love to see the rest of the commission and city staff fill the rest of those 30 spots that they have open, so.
Thank you so much, Commissioner, for those words, I will be supporting you. I'll be there. Shelby, if you'd like to say a few words?
Yes, thank you. As I said, my name is Shelby Calderon, I am the Community Engagement and Event Specialist at Feeding South Florida. Thank you for recognizing Hunger Action Month for September. Feeding South Florida, along with many other food organizations, recognize September as Hunger Action Month to kind of place a spotlight on hunger and food insecurity around the nation. Through Feeding South Florida alone, we serve about 1 million, over 1 million individuals through a variety of programs and initiatives that you were talking about. We do so by collaborating with about 300 partner agencies, whether that's churches, soup kitchens, other pantries, and so on. We, and we, excuse me, we believe in providing food for today, but also helping move individuals out of the cycle of poverty through different initiatives. So we have our workforce training initiatives, that is the warehouse and the culinary training programs. Overall, we serve four counties, and we have two physical locations, so that's down south in Pembroke, as well as Boynton, like you said. So you guys are more than welcome to come take a tour or volunteer, just let us know. The Boynton houses are in-house client choice pantry, as well as our community kitchen. Overall, we are extremely grateful that you recognized us, and we look forward to our ongoing partnership with you. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Shelby, I do have one question for you, if I may.
Yeah, yes, sir.
You may or may not have the answer now, but.
All right.
I used to serve every Thursday out at, either Hester Center with Feeding South Florida.
Yes, sir.
And then they changed that from physically handing the food out in trunks and all that.
Yeah.
And moved it over on High Ridge where the building is.
Yeah.
Do you have any feel whether or not we are still doing the same number, or more or less?
Well, the Hester Center was one of the last locations. Because of COVID, it slowly ended, but we do still have distributions in 300 surrounding partner agencies. So if your question is if we're still doing distributions, we are. We have a locator on our website, and it'll tell you the closest one and the closest day and the time. The numbers aren't as much as COVID, but there's still a huge need.
Okay, I'll be in contact with you, thank you.
Okay, yeah, of course, you're welcome.
Thank you. All right, we're going to move on to the next item. The next item is 2C, it reads, Proposed Resolution Number R23-111, Budget Stabilization. This is amending the financial policy. And I'm going to turn now to our finance director. Mara, take it away.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners, Mara Frederickson, Director of Financial Services. So this item comes directly from Governmental Accounting Standards Board Statement 54, which was passed initially in 2010. The city implemented a fund balance policy related to that, which was Resolution R11-106, which maintained that the city keep 10% of the fund balance for the following year's expenditures. So if the budgeted funds were 118 million, we would keep 11.8 million or 10% of that. When the finance department had a conversation with our financial consultant, Davenport, last year, they recommended that we increase that reserve a little bit. So this policy is what is implementing that. We are proposing that we add an additional 5% stabilization fund, so we would keep the reserves at 15%. Davenport, which was the consultant that we used, actually recommended that over the next eight years, we up that to about 25%. So we currently have about 18% in fund balance. So we have enough to cover this policy, plus about 3% above that for unreserved fund balance. And this policy is just implementing that.
Thank you, Mara, I'm going to begin with my left, Commissioner Kelly.
I do not have any questions, thank you.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Hay.
I'm good.
Commissioner Cruz. I'm also good. With that, I will turn now to public comments specifically on this item. This is the budget stabilization policy. This is going to make sure that we have an extra cushion, and it's a good thing in the long run. I wish we had it sooner. All right. All right, seeing no one approaching the podium, I'm going to turn now to those online. Is there anybody online, many with their hands up?
Mr. Mayor, we have no hands raised.
All right, with that, public comments on this item is now closed. I'm going to turn back now to my colleagues, are there any further questions or comments? Seeing none, may I have a motion to approve?
To approve.
Second.
This is Resolution R23-111, the motion came from Commissioner Hay, the second came from Commissioner Cruz. All those in favor of the motion say aye. Aye, all those who oppose the motion say no. The ayes have it, the motion passes unanimously. Congratulations, we're now concluding with item 2C, we're moving on to item 2D. Item 2D says, Proposed Resolution Number R23-108, Annual Comprehensive Fee Schedule Rate Changes. I'll turn back to Finance Director to give us an update.
Evening, Mayor and Commissioners, Mara Frederickson, Director of Financial Services. So last year, the city implemented an annual comprehensive fee schedule. This is an update to that fee schedule. There are a few proposed rate changes. We are proposing a rate change to our water fees of about 10%. A rate change of our sanitation fees of about $3 per, and then a rate change of our parking from $1.50 an hour to $3 an hour. These are items already included in the proposed budget. They are necessary for basic cost of doing business. Increases to fuel, increases to the CBA agreements, the basic CPI, chemicals, fuel, and other items of that nature, basic maintenance, so.
Basically, if I'm understanding correctly, Mara, that these are just CPI increases?
Correct.
Gas goes up, materials go up, so this is nothing more than just keeping up with that? Is that right?
Yes.
Okay, all right, was there anything else? I'm going to turn now to my left this time, Commissioner Kelly.
I do not have any questions right now.
All right, Commissioner Hay. All right, Commissioner Cruz, any questions or comments?
My questions were answered during the agenda review.
All right, with that, I'll turn now to public comments specifically on this item. Please approach the podium if you'd like to speak on this item, after which we'll go to those online. Let me switch to the timer here. All right, we've got two podiums.
Susan Oyer, Seacrest Estates, Boynton Beach. I'm going to go back to saying some of the ARPA money should have been used to solve some of this problem. I think the increase in parking is absolutely horrendous. No one should be paying for parking in South Florida, there's parking everywhere. And I think you could get around this by following my advice I brought forward earlier, which is get with our partner, FPNL, and put the solar panels above all the parking. Not only would it keep everyone's car cool, but then you would have a source of income coming in to cover what you would be losing out by charging for parking. And that seems like it would solve a lot of the problems and be eco-friendly and put us back on the map as a leader of eco-friendly leadership in our city. I really, as far as waste, I'm sorry, I didn't catch the number she was speaking so quickly. What was the percent increase in the waste, solid waste? Was that 5%, 3%? She talked too fast and I couldn't catch it.
It's not, it's not a Q and A, just public comment.
Thank you. So I hope it gets repeated then, because I'm sure I'm not the only one who missed it. How inappropriate your behavior is. So I will say, maybe we should look at our garbage people, and I've brought this up with, you know, the utilities department before. I know on my street, our garbage person likes to go around throwing and breaking garbage cans on a regular basis. So maybe if we looked at having waste disposal people, I don't know what the correct term is. And I've got to say, I've always been very happy with my utilities, my waste management people. I've been exceptionally happy over the decades. But whoever we have on my street for the last year has broken my bins, he's broken my neighbor's bin, we actually watched him rip the lid off the green bin. I found pieces of my bin in my yard for a couple of weeks, and then he finally just cracked the heck out of it, and I had to send pictures to get new bins. So maybe we should be looking at who is actually dealing with the trash, because maybe we're wasting excessive amount of money having to replace bins. And maybe that could be a cost savings that would defray some of this as well, so thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Cindy Falco de Carrado, I concur with a $3 parking fee. I mean, we're being taxed every which way we can, and I hear her say, well, we want to stay up with everybody else. Why do we want to stay up with everybody else? Why don't we just be Boynton Beach? Why do we have to charge people all the time for doing anything in this community? It's bad enough you charge for the beaches, and people can't even get to the beach, you have parking tickets, because people from everywhere else are parking. And we had a lady that was here that addressed that a while back. In regards to the garbage pickup, I concur as well with Susan, only because in my property, sometimes they don't even come on the day they're supposed to. They might not come for another week if my garbage sits out there. It's disgusting, it's unacceptable. They used to come in the morning, now they come around 3:00, sometimes 5:00 o'clock in the afternoon. It's just like there's no set schedule, it's just like everybody doing whatever they want. So for us to keep paying for services that we're not getting, that's highway robbery. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, go ahead, say your name for the record.
Yes, Debbie Marchia, Boynton Beach. I'm just, as far as the parking is concerned, we'll just go elsewhere. Thank you.
All right, next speaker, specifically on the schedule fees, fee schedule.
Yeah, hi, Ernest Magnoli, 710 Northeast 7th Street. So utilities, in my opinion, are out of control in the city, it's very inefficient. I look at the lack of maintenance of the facilities, I look at the way the garbage and the recycling is handled. It's not picked up on the right days. People are putting all the wrong things and all the wrong bins, and when you call in to complain, nobody in the city will, I'm sorry, I don't want to condemn anybody. But the utilities service needs complete, like, over, well, yeah. It needs like someone from, like an auditor, it needs an outside auditor. And one of the problems I have with the city, you're leaning much towards an inside auditor. I think the departments like utilities need an outside auditor that will talk to the public and say, hey, what's going on? How's the utility, how's your water, how's your sewer, how's this, how's the garbage? So that we could do it independently. Because if it doesn't work that way, every time we come here, you're just to keep improving, increasing the cost to us. And if anyone stays for the course of this full meeting, everything keeps going up. So by the time you walk out of here at 2:00 in the morning, you've got like $800 a month when you add everything up. And you try and make everyone see, oh, it's not much, it's only 6%. But 6 here, 8 there, 12 there, 9 there, 15 there.
All right, many, do we have anybody with their digital hands raised?
Mr. Mayor, we have no hands raised.
All right, with that, public comments on this item is now closed. Again, this is item 2D, Proposed Resolution R23-108. Are there any further questions or comments from my colleagues on the board? Commissioner Cruz, any follow-up?
Yeah, during my agenda review, I had a conversation with Andrew about the parking increases, and if we could bring those down to 250, I think it was. I think it's proposed at 3, and I wanted to bring that down a little bit, if the board approves.
All right, let's hear from everybody, and let's see what they think, all right? The proposal is to go from 3 to 2 and 1/2. Commissioner Hay, your thoughts or any questions you may have? Oh, your mic.
I could support that.
Okay. Commissioner Kelly, your turn. Commissioner Kelly, your turn.
I just had a, Andrew, I know we had talked about in the agenda review that there was a way that we could, or was this the conversation where we talked about for particular groups? Or that we could reduce the parking for, you know, whether it be seniors or what's that? I know we were keeping the senior rate the same. Can, can you just explain a little bit how that would affect? So I can really gauge what that would affect.
Sure. So I think it was roughly around four years ago, we transitioned. We were a cash-based business at the beach. We wanted to transition to automated. And when we did that, we kept the rates relatively the same as they were when they were cash. Since that time, you're, fast forward four, four years later, at the beach, for example, our rates are so low, I think even someone from the public audience who mentioned it, you know, we're seeing a lot of out-of-town people coming to the beach, taking up our spaces. So one of the reasons we're recommending for this increase is to help turn over that parking. That is a standard mechanism that we use within, in the parking industry. The, you raise your rate a little bit, it turns the parking, makes the availability of the parking. Part of the problem is we have people going to the beach that are staying there all day and taking up the parking. So that was one of the main reasons. And as far as, we did keep the senior rate at, at $50. We want to make sure that the seniors have access to the beach. You know, and I think down the road with the, with the permits, I think that's a personal decision that someone has to make, depending on how many times they go to the beach. You know, is it more cost-effective for them to pay the hourly rate versus going to, to a permit, to the annual permit? So I do think that, you know, some personal accountability to the public needs to make that decision that, you know, hey, it's cheaper for me to just, I might only go to the beach twice a year. I spend six hours. I'll pay this $6 or whatever it is for the two days, other than paying the annual rate. I, I will mention that. I know we're on the lower end. Again, with all our fees, if you look at us compared to the county, we are very low, almost to the point that we subsidize things in the city. So I think this brings us back in line with making parking cost feasible and making sure that we're recup, recuperating the cost for the programs.
Okay, and so right now we're charging $1.50 an hour, right?
Correct. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Okay, I would support having it at $2.50 so that it's a more gradual increase. But, so I would support you on that, Commissioner Cruz.
All right, thank you. Is there any other follow-ups from anybody on, on the board here? Okay, so this again is item 2D. If there's no further comments, I'll undertake a motion to approve item 2D with the amendment that the parking hourly rate be amended to 250 an hour.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and we have a second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion with the amendment say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed say no. The ayes have it, the motion passes unanimously. Thank you, everybody. That concludes item 2D. So we're now going to move on to Section 3, Announcements, Community and Special Events and Presentations. Earlier, this board had approved the agenda amendment to move item 3D to this position here. Unfortunately, Vice Mayor Turkin has a personal situation and could not be here. I would recommend a motion to table.
Motion to table.
Present. I heard it first from Commissioner Hay. And then, is that a second, Commissioner Kelly? And we have a second from Commissioner Kelly. All those in favor of tabling item 3D to the next meeting, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed of the tabling say no. The ayes have it, the motion passes. Item 3D is tabled to the next meeting. 3A is just an announcement. Our second budget hearing to adopt the fiscal year 2324 budget will be held during the City Commission Meeting on Thursday, September 14, 2023, at 6:00 PM. Same place right here, City Commission Chambers. Our next announcement is that the City of Boynton Beach 9/11 Memorial Ceremony. The City of Boynton Beach will host a 9/11 memorial ceremony on Monday, September 11, 2023, starting at 8:00 AM. This commemoration will be held at Centennial Park, right, that's right next to us, at 120 East Ocean Avenue, next to City Hall to recognize the anniversary of the tragic events of September 11, 2001, and to honor the first responders whose lives were lost and the resilience demonstrated by the United States in the face of adversity. This event is free and open to the public. That concludes all of the items under Section 3, if I'm not mistaken. And now we're going to turn now to public audience. This is the portion of the agenda, if you would like to speak on any non-agended items, something that's not on the agenda, and also anything on consent. So those are the two categories. If you'd like to approach the podium now, after which we'll, we'll go to those, everybody online. All right, I see one person, as always, state your name for the record and begin when you're ready. Go ahead.
Yes, so Mara Keridorek. You are very fortunate. You have an excellent interim attorney. In fact, you should make him the city attorney. David brings not only a wealth of knowledge in the law, but he also has a wealth of knowledge in Boynton Beach. He served as the attorney for the Planning and Zoning Board for many, many years. Reverend Hale will remember that. He also was a code board attorney for the city. And he also advised on several city commission matters when he was with Jim Sheriff's Friends. David's expertise is second to none. And I say that having worked on the code board with him, also on other matters as well. He is a professional and you should make him your city attorney. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next comment. We do have another podium. Let's hear it from this side.
Hello, my name is Laura Ratcliffe. And I've been a resident of Boynton Beach for over 30 years. When we moved to Florida, we had the chore, the fortune to be able to choose to live wherever we wanted to. And we chose Boynton Beach because of its small-time feel and the feeling that it would be a wonderful place to raise children. Unfortunately, that is not how it is anymore. These commission meetings have often devolved into harassment of many of the volunteers on the boards who give their time and service to make the city a better place to live. Specifically, the meeting on August 10th, there was quite a bit of harassment that was going on. And I'm very disappointed that the commissioners did not put a stop to that. It seems like tonight you've been a little stronger, but in the past you have not. Unfortunately, this kind of harassment and overspeaking has been especially true in regards to the Arts Board and the proposed artwork for the PBS property and Patty Warashina Sculpture Harmony. In these public comments, there has been an undercurrent of racism, intolerance, and a complete lack of respect for arts, arts boards members, which should be addressed by the commission at that time. That city commissioners did not bang a gavel when racist and disparaging remarks were made to halt them was an utter failure on your part. Additionally, the fact that Commissioner Turkin has threatened to remove certain board members if they vote to approve Harmony hearkens back to a fascist and authoritarian past that destroyed the World Order and caused World War II. In fact, the beginnings of fascism and authoritarianism began in censorship of the arts in Nazi Germany. Art was described as being degenerate and was removed from the public space. And there have been many people who have made comments saying that the sculpture harmony is degenerate. Many commenter, commentators at this meetings in the past few weeks only want a certain type of art or by certain artists. Any art in, this is unacceptable. Boynton Beach is an extremely racially diverse city. Any art in public places should be for the enjoyment, inclusion, and education of all residents, not just the people who happen to scream the loudest at meetings in order to intimidate them.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, next speaker. I'm going to go to my other side here. If you'd like to state your name for the record, we're going to go back and forth between the two podiums.
Good evening. My name is Brother Victor Norfas. I live at Boynton Beach, Florida, 6th Avenue. I'm here to enlighten everybody about the Unity Project. I might pass out some information. I'll briefly read it. Heart of Boynton Unity Project 2024. The Unity Project is an innovative and art collaborative with the community, the city's local government, and artists to highlight and bring awareness to the 100 years since the passage of Ordinance 37, meaning segregating. Yeah, I need my extra ass. Okay. Through the creative arts and community dialogue, the Unity Project engages the residents of the Heart of Boynton in District 2 to express their overlooked history with art, to enhance the community for unity bonding, and to celebrate with the entire city. The Heart of Boynton meets every Wednesday night from 6:00 to 8:00 PM at Carolyn Sims Center. Everyone is invited. The Unity Project's artistic expression projects will be broadly facilitated through physical enhancement of public art, murals, historic markers for important people, places, and events since the 1924 passage of residential segregation. There are many expressions of African-American experiences in Boynton that be, can be depicted through art, explaining the complex history of the racial disparities in this city. The legal establishment of ordinance of racial segregation in neighborhoods is also is an example of why we need this unity. The Unity Project places the community of Boynton in a position to educate the community, the state, and the nation about our shared collective past and united future. The multiple public-facing events will take place all year 2024. And they'll be located in historical places that were impacted by Ordinance 37, like the vacant lot where the St. Paul Church once stood, like the vacant lot behind the veterans where Reverend Butler's home once stood, which was the last thing that was torn down. There I have other information here about people that are going to be included, like St. John, St. Cuthbert, and other churches. But what I wanted to say is that when individuals look up into the sky and they see a rainbow, no one has a problem with it. But when you take that same rainbow and put it on the ground in the middle of the city, suddenly people see what they have inside of them. Art is representative of what you see. So if you see racism and hatred in a piece of metal that has no physical form, that's what's in your heart. Don't let other people's views deter those of others that do not have those views. We look up in the sky, we look on the ground, we see a rainbow. That's it. God bless you and have a good meeting.
Thank you. All right, next speaker. Begin when you're ready and state your name for the record.
My name is J.D. Self. I've been in Palm Beach County since I got out of the Navy in 1981. And I've been in Boynton Beach since 1987. And I addressed the garbage commission, I mean, the thick art commission, a few weeks ago. And I didn't succeed, but I'm here to express myself again. This statue is an attack upon the spirit of every good American citizen and decent human being that has the misfortune to look at it. It is an offense. The people in this government, Boynton government, you know what you're doing. Because you have been schooled in the religion of the beast, canonism. And the first right from canonism to be enacted into our lives in this country was abortion. Abortion is child sacrifice, and that's what canonism is. That the latest right is child molestation, official child molestation. That's canonism. That's the religion of the beast, and you people are supporting it. Canonism, what you, you might ask what it is. It's the religion of the beast. I think the people that work for Boynton, City of Boynton Beach are, have a lot of evil in them, in their hearts. But I have heard some encouraging words tonight when people say that they have the heart of a servant. That's what citizen government is all about. That's what America is all about, citizen government. The name harmony is a propaganda term. It is classic left communism, and it doesn't mean harmony. It means disharmony. Anybody that looks at that thing, well, they're looking at a demon. They're worshiping, worshiping an idol, an idol of a demon from hell. And that's what Boynton Beach wants for our good citizens, especially the young people. It makes me sick. I, I've been in this community for a long time, and I've been very pleased until the last, until, actually, until 2000 is when things started. Is when the beast started riot.
Thank you. We're going to move on to the next public comment speaker. One second, we're going to go back and forth between the two podiums. Next speaker on this side, please approach the podium and state your name for the record and begin when you're ready.
Others, I'd like to add to the record. Thank you very much. My name is Ace Tilton Ratcliffe. I am a member of the Art Advisory Board. I've lived in Boynton Beach for the majority of my life. My family has been here for more than 30 years. I am a homeowner and a business owner. I've spent the last month being publicly harassed due to my civic participation in vote for Patty Warashina Sculpture Harmony. Multiple articles written about me have targeted me for intended angry mob response, which worked. Last week, I was cornered, accosted, and called obscenities in the Woolbright Home Depot parking lot. I've been called satanic. My words have been taken out of context, and I've been accused of silencing other board members. Commissioners, would it not be counterintuitive for my own privileges to silence white women from speaking, given what I look like? I have had strangers post photos of my body online trying to connect my tattoos with the occult and pedophilia. I've been accused of murdering dogs as an in-home euthanasia provider, and I had to listen while everyone in attendance was told that I would move on to murdering people next. Not one of the commissioners interrupted, reprimanded the personal attacks, or removed the speakers from public comment. Others in the art board audience also dealt with harassment, including racism and threats of bodily harm. The allowance of such behavior creates a cooling effect where people with opposing viewpoints to the loudest voices are genuinely afraid to be involved in local government because of the intentional terror being created by those who want to censor art and ideas they dislike. No one should be afraid to participate in their local government. Freedom of speech is a basic tenet of existing as an American. But an open public audience here or during board meetings should not be defined by bullies. There is no such thing as freedom from consequences if that speech is hateful, bigoted, or unkind. Our bylaws specify decorum as a necessity. It is your job, commissioners, to enforce those rules and to stop harassment and threats to your constituents. Like free speech, the freedom to create and experience works of art is essential to our democracy. The role of artists is to create new perspectives through their artworks. Controversy in art sparks public discourse and challenges societal norms and beliefs, but disagreement is not tantamount to the allowance of harassment. It is also normal for art to not be 100% popular with every single person. I know not everyone loves the sculpture Callicade placed at 500 Ocean. The individual certainly has the right to accept or reject art for themselves, but they do not have the right to suppress or censor such artwork or artist with whom they do not agree. All censorship is contrary to democratic principles. Upholding democracy, commissioners, is your entire job upon that dais. Please do not allow bullies to allow, to change the way the city encourages arts any more than they already have. Please use your power to allow for a diversity of ideas and viewpoints and an art board that performs its tasks to the best of its ability as a group of selected experts in the field. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right, next speaker on the other podium. State your name for the record.
Marchia Boynton Beach. I'm giving you guys your 30 days' notice. I believe at the last meeting you had mentioned about a 30-day notice and all of that. Well, we are doing a petition. I have gone around. And let me tell you that the voices of Boynton Beach specifically, okay? People could say what they want. Everybody does. Everybody does view art. It's in the eye of the beholder. But I'm telling you that the people in the community, when they see that particular statue, they don't even know what it is, okay? They are using, I'm talking about other people, not us. Other people are saying the exact same thing that you hear some of the people here saying, demonic, evil. Whatever way you want to call it, this is the voice of the community, okay? It's not about censoring a piece of art. We don't care if a Martian, okay, was commissioned to do it. But the way that the Art Advisory Board Commission went about it, okay, is absolutely absurd. $100,000 to commission a piece of art without voting on it. I think that the community should be aware that their back door, putting a piece of art up at PBS, when they could put it in their building, that's fine. But as far as we're concerned, I'm letting you know we have a petition going, and we're going to continue. And we do not want that on the road. They could put it in their building. I mean, somebody's got to eat it. Why would you commission a piece of art a year in advance without voting on it? Thank you.
Next speaker.
Susan Oyer, Secrist Estates, Boynton Beach. I have five things to talk to you about, none of which involve art. So yay. Having sat on the Arts Board, I've endured that myself. So first thing, I can't talk. Am I missing it? Have we not put another historic planner back into the budget for this next year? We were winning awards and setting the example across the state of Florida when we had a Historic Preservation Board Manager in our city. And while I could see you might want to job-share that person with grants because that person's job is to get grants, we should be bringing this back. And I'm not trying to fight about the budget you're approving, but looking forward, this is something we need to bring back. We have beautiful art pieces around, or historic art pieces around the city, you know, like the boards with the QR codes on them that have fallen into disrepair. We were going to rename the city streets and put the historic names back. All this has fallen apart because you don't have a historic planner, so we need to get that back. Number two, my neighbor's house caught fire the other day, last week. And I've already reached out to Solid Waste, but the contents of the person's home have been sitting in their front yard waiting for bulk pickup since last Monday. And I haven't been home today, so maybe they finally got removed. But the person still has the other half of their house they need to put out to have bulk picked up. And even with all the rain, it smells horrendous because, you know, this was a house fire, a gas fire. And I don't care what DeSantis says, gas is not the way to go because this was most likely a gas fire. My third thing is, are we going to start putting more EV chargers in the city? We have 1/4 of all cars that will be electric in the next year and a half, two years, and we certainly don't have 1/4 of the parking spaces being electric. Number four, when are we going to do something about the palm trees on Quantum? They dump trash all over the ground every single storm. I am constantly having to reach out to Adam to let him know that the city needs to come pick up their trash because they're not maintaining the palm trees. And there's also median strips that are barren and empty. And I would like to say, number five, thank you, Wes, for getting recycle bins into my neighborhood park. We can use more, but thank you for the one we have because I'm out there a couple nights a week picking up all the recycling that people toss around and putting it in the recycle bin and trying to teach all the kids to recycle. So I think maybe there needs to be an education component going on in the city, reminding people what a blue recycle bin is for, that it's not for trash, that it is for cans and plastic. But thank you, Wes. He's been excellent to deal with on this, and I just wanted to let you all know. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please approach the podium. State your name for the record, begin when you're ready.
Hi, I'm Eileen Greenhatcher of Boynton Beach. I'm a postal worker, but I want to find out about our downtown post office. And I see that it is not on the agenda, but I know that it is going to be destroyed within the next year and right in the future. So can they put it on the agenda to find out where the new downtown office, if they're going to place one downtown? I know some of the plans today plan to move all the way out west, but I know that there's a whole lot of people that are in the downtown area that are not going to be pleased with coming all the way west past Congress to come for the downtown area. Done. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next person.
My name is Dave Ratcliffe. I've lived in Boynton since 1992. I've raised my family here with my wife of 38 years. Had the birth of our youngest, now 26, at Bethesda. Had all my family go to schools and colleges in Florida. Been a member of this community since it was much smaller and had cow pastures. My background is as a retired 28-year Air Force Lieutenant Colonel and Gulf War Combat Veteran, currently employed with American Airlines for 32 years as pilot and an international captain. I'm also Ace's dad. To say that I'm disappointed in this commission and some of the members in some of the community is being kind. I come first to support freedom of speech and expression through art. I also support our businesses and their freedoms to operate and make choices without government interference. I support the voices of the marginalized, disabled, and those who each have their own opinions. That's what I fought for, and that's what my friends have died for. But to a point, I do not support people in positions of power showing favoritism and threatening to flex our authority because others may disagree with them. That's not representing your constituency. As you hopefully are aware, the devices of a particular group here required police intervention and later outside openly threatening and yelling slurs, which is unacceptable in our society and our community. Ace has been bullied. They'd mentioned that. And the commission report here needs to speak up and not tolerate the poor behavior. Your representatives and leaders, PBS and many others, do not see the imaginings of satanic occult or some kind of gender-neutral pedophilia in the Harmony piece of art. Nor do I. It's art. We needed to broaden the community. I do question what kind of persons look for and see those sick imaginings in a statue, though. You have a volunteer art board which prioritizes Florida artists and served the community for long before some political leanings of the current representatives. There have been several recommendations all attached in an email pertaining to the proposed articles in A, C, and D. But what we're trying to do really is to make Boynton a safe and nice community to live in. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I see one more person on my left.
Hi, my name is Sam Velazquez. I'm a member of the Art Advisory Board. With all due respect to the commissioners, I would urge the commissioners to consider the voting against the motion made by Commissioner Angela Cruz at the previous meeting on the requirements for membership to the Art Advisory Board. I believe this motion was prompted by the reaction to an unauthorized survey of the very few of the residents of District 1 presented at the Art Advisory Meeting of August 10, 2023. The wording in the motion must, in quotes, "must be an elector in Boynton Beach." It's in violation of the Boynton Rights of 1965 and the individual freedom of choice we have to exercise our right to vote or our right not to vote. In addition, it is not right for this commission to impose city residents' voting records as a qualification or requirement for serving on the Art Advisory Board or any part of our city government. This is not Australia where voting is mandatory for citizens. This is the good old USA. In addition, to allowing the passing of the illicit motion, you have abdicated your rights and privileges by limiting the scope of possible art installations to those artists who live in our community. Ask yourselves this. What would have happened in the U.S. if the U.S. government had rejected the gift of the Statue of Liberty because it was not locally made? Don't limit art expression. Instead, expand it.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hi, Eric Partey.
Get the time to set properly? Okay.
Hi, Eric Partey. I don't have a problem with the fact that it's art itself. I'm an artist and a songwriter myself, and it is all about expression. But if you notice in the music stores, a lot of albums that are controversial on their subject matter will have parental guidance side or viewer discretion advised. And with the message that this piece that they want to put in front of the PBS building, it's a very damaging message. I mean, this gender ideology is causing children to commit suicide. And it opens the door to pedophilia and rape. I saw one of the Pride Festival, LGBTQ festivals, whatever you want to call these things, where one of the performers, I think it was a man, dressed in like a bodysuit, and he had a child, maybe two or three years old, swinging it around like a doll and stroking its back. Yeah, I thought it was kind of disturbing. And what happened at that Dodgers game when they had a man as Jesus up on the cross, where the lion croaked, and another man doing a handstand in front of him, twerking, and somebody else behind them with a sign saying, "Jesus was trans." Now, I'm not a religious person, but I found that disturbing and very insulting. And this message that this artist is putting out there is nothing but trouble. It's breaking up families. It's an attack on religion. It's an attack on men. It's an attack on women. And why? Why are they so obsessed with putting that message out there? I've already explained, this is my third time up here explaining the damage that this is all causing in our society. You know, it's art, okay, that's fine. But put it in a museum or an art gallery. Or if you're going to put it in public, I think you should put a "viewer discretion advised" sign in front of it because it's nothing that causes a problem in our society. And children are committing suicides over this. And it needs to be taken seriously. What happened to the days when we saw a creepy middle-aged guy sitting there watching children play? People kept an eye on him, sometimes a cop for even called. Now, parents are literally throwing their children in the laps of these grown men wearing dresses. I have no problem with a man wearing a dress. But why are they forcing it on children? Do they want to get their hands on the children? Why is this being forced on our children? Okay? It's something to think about if you want to put something in public. Because what the message that represents, you might as well put a Nazi flag in front of that building.
Cindy Falco de Carrado. Well, Ace spoke very eloquently, kudos. But that night was so disgusting.
Hold on just a second, please.
Okay.
Where did you hit here? Stop. I got it right here. Okay, go ahead.
Okay, Cindy Falco de Carrado. As I said, Ace spoke so eloquently. And if you would have listened closely, you would have heard the double message. It's okay for her to attack someone. It's okay for her, or what she wants to be called, what, an "it"? I'm not sure with the binary lingo. All I know is a "he" and a "she" because that's how God created us male and female. But I noticed in the conversation, everything that she was saying...
Excuse me. You are not going to address an individual person in the audience.
I got you, darling. Okay. So in that, when I hear people standing up, speaking for freedom of speech and speaking for them, when they're doing the exact same thing to others, it's shameful.
You need to focus on city business and not any specific individual, okay?
Right here, your city business. While I'm talking about the art...
Refer to the City of Boynton Beach and not any individual.
I was talking about on the Art Cultural Committee, which I sat on, and we did say what was good and what wasn't good. And we did have them make changes. If it didn't follow through with the way that we chose to have our public community demonstrated. So when there were things that were made that were off, we went back to the people who paid the monies, and we said, "Listen, that is not conducive to what we're trying to do in Boynton Beach." So I too was on the Art Committee, and I too know the rules. And unfortunately, it was not abided by. But I'm here to talk about this as well because many people don't know about this. And I want every person at home to go look at your proposed tax bill. You'll see that your school board, by law...
Miss, you need to address the commission.
This is public. I'm trying to educate people.
We have nothing to do with the school board. We are not the school board.
Then I will have people take a look at Children's Services.
That is not related to city business. Your time has expired. Thank you very much, all right? It has to be about the city. Thank you very much. Thank you. Go take that to the school board. That's their business. That's not ours. We have nothing to do with that. Thank you so much. Conversation's over. Thank you. Thank you. Have a good night. All right, we're going to move on. All right, next speaker. And one second, we're going to take a brief moment until the timer is fixed. We're waiting for that to be taken care of. Members of the board, I'd like to request a 10-minute recess. Is that all right with everybody? All right, all those in favor of a 10-minute recess? We're going to wait until the timer is fixed anyway, so we can begin. All right, all those in favor of a 10-minute recess, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed, say no. All right, we're going to take a 10-minute recess. Good, and begin.
So first, I want to say that we do not want to be a smart city or a 15-minute city. And our name, Boynton Beach, has popped up on quite a number of government lists, saying that we are going to be those. And we are against that. We, the people, do not need those, how would I put it? Those people who are trying to control that, coming into our city and controlling us as a 15-minute city or a smart city. And now I want to read a quick little thing. It says, this came out, I found this about, it came to my phone about an hour before this started today. And it says, "But the pushback has continued and comes from a group of people who are angry that the artist does not support the former occupant of the White House. This group is also angry that the artist is not white. They also use the words about the statue that describes it as demonic and sexual. The upheaval they're creating to ban this public art designed for the new PBS building is now leading to efforts to change the rules." Okay, first, I want to say that this has nothing to do with President Trump or President Biden or anybody, okay? This has to do, it doesn't have to do with Republican or Democrat. This has to do with the children in the city. That's why us mama bears and papa bears are up here fighting this. Because this is demonic. It is satanic. It is ugly. And it does have a mark going right across the belly of a woman, okay? Where a woman would have a baby, as if it's an abortion. It has no gender. It's non-binary. It is repulsive. It is next to an elementary school that they want to put this. And it is also next to a children's park for kids that are handicapped and across the street from a family park. It's also across the street from many family neighborhoods. If they want to put it in their building, fine. Put it in your building. You want to look at a 15-foot statue in your building? Go right ahead. You want to look at a 15 foot statue in your building, go right ahead. Quite honestly, I think PBS should not be allowed to move into Boynton Beach. Because if that's what they want to put on the outside, God only knows what they want to put on the inside to show to children. Because this is all about the children. No matter what we do, no matter what us adults talk about, it always boils down to the next generation, the little generations, the little people, the children. And we cannot have this. Thank you.
All right, this is the last call for in-person public comment speakers. You are the last individual in this room, sir. After which, we will go to those online.
Hi, Ernest Mcnally, 710 North 7th Street. So I just want to understand. Public comment, I can talk about anything in the city, correct? Because I don't know why, when somebody wants to talk about the schools or something, they get interrupted and shut down. Since when aren't the public schools part of the city? Unless I'm missing something? And I don't see what's funny. And I don't see how the decorum. Half the meeting, everybody's missing. Where is everybody? And I don't appreciate the decorum, the way these meetings, you know? This is a city meeting. It's supposed to be run by the Open Public Meetings Act rules. And they usually follow Robert's rules, where there's a decorum. You know, people can express their opinion. They can have differing opinions. But yet, you don't get this indication that it's something political going on here, that it matters to our opinion, that people can call us a Trumpster, or a white supremacist, or violent? What has that got to do with anything? And why is that allowed? And then when someone stands up here and wants to say something about the school, cut them off, this is not about the schools, get out. Why does it work that way? Why is it all one sided? And you all think it's, I'm not going to say you all think it's funny, but you do smile a lot up there. I don't get it. There's a lot going on in this city. Crime, corruption, fraud. There's a lot going on. Look at the July 3rd, the million, 12 million gallons. You still haven't done anything. The whole neighborhood stinks. All the signs are up again about the bacteria. And yet, you're letting everybody fish and sell the fish to the stores and eh eh eh. Don't you care about anybody letting kids in that disgusting filthy water? And then anytime I try and call the city manager or anybody and say, oh, we don't want to talk about the signs. Well, how come they're all up again? They're all up all over the city. And in Boynton Beach Marina, they're ripping the signs down. That's a crime, you know? That's a crime ripping those signs down. That's a crime. That's a crime. And then not telling children renting those jet skis that they're in that polluted water? That's another problem for the city. It just keeps happening. Cover up, cover up, cover up. And by the way, I witnessed what crashed that main. When you were doing the windows, you approved that thing on that building. They brought in tractor trailers and a big crane. And I said, don't put that weight on that clay sewer. Shut up, they said. And they broke the sewer main. That's what did it. And you haven't done one thing to clean it up. You won't even talk to the public. And people are being poisoned and endangered, and you won't respond.
Monty, how many do we have with their digital hands raised?
Mr. Mayor, we have one single hand raised.
All right, and who is that?
That person is Ana Ochino, Ochino. She's joining us via cellphone.
All right, you may begin when you're ready. I will let you know when you have 30 seconds remaining on the clock.
Ana, you're unmuted. Go ahead.
Get your name for the record to begin.
Hello, my name is Annabelle Ochino. Thank you very much for taking the time to listen. I'm a firm believer in that art is supposed to evoke feeling positively or negatively and create healthy, constructive conversation, which is exactly what harmony achieves for the folk of Boynton Beach. My belief is that it is of vital importance that representation matters, no matter the percentage of persons. And to see a part of the Asian culture and community represented is a wonderful thing. I believe the art board already supports local Floridian artists and that maintaining the option to have national and international artists create works for our community is a valuable way to continue to build up and elevate our beloved town. Although I understand the want for appeal power within reason, I do believe that a 60 day appeal process is excessive and would delay the art board and community involvement. Veto power makes sense if those powers are within a reasonable set of standard operating procedures. Otherwise, there could be concerns of unreasonable censorship, which makes me question the validity of the democratic system we have set in place. The public audience section should absolutely not be defined by bullies or persons who believe harassment, name calling, threats of violence, and more are reasonable actions. The point of this is to be able to have professionalism and decorum during these sessions, which it is your job commissioners to enforce. By staying silent, you are allowing the vital of democracy allegedly set in place to be broken and creating an unsafe environment to be able to speak. Finalizing, I urge you all to please consider all of your constituents that you represent within our community. Not just those who believe harassment, bullying, and violence are the main resource and option for communication. People in your community should not have to fear for their safety when venturing outside of their homes, because they happen to have varying political beliefs. Our beautiful one small town is growing and changing, commissioners. That is inevitable. It is our job as both political representatives and residents alike to help facilitate a healthy and sustainable development of the future for our community. The community that you all took on an oath to represent fairly and equally. Harmony, I truly believe is a beautiful opportunity to do exactly that. Thank you so much for your time and consideration.
Thank you. And with that, public audience is now closed. We are now moving on to consent agenda. I'm going to ask my colleagues to take a look at consent. Are there any items that you would like to pull from consent agenda? This is section six. Any requests from my colleagues? Seeing none, may have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Oh, moved.
We have a motion from Commissioner Cruz. I heard a second from Commissioner Kelly. All those in favor of the motion to approve the entirety of consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed, say no. The ayes have it, the motion passes unanimously. We're now moving on to consent bids and purchases over $100,000. Are there any requests to pull any items under section seven? Hearing none, may have a motion to approve consent bids and purchases over $100,000. I have a motion from Commissioner Cruz and a second from Commissioner Hay. All those in favor to approve consent bids and purchases, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed, say no. The ayes have it, the motion passes unanimously. All right, I'm going to ask if everybody could close the door back there so we don't interrupt the proceedings inside the chamber. We are now moving on to public hearing. I'm going to turn now to our interim city attorney to swear in the appropriate individuals and open the item.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is for items 8A and 8B, which are quasi judicial matters. So if you're going to be offering any testimony to the city commission this evening, or even thinking about possibly offering testimony related to these two matters, if you could please stand at this time and raise your right hand to be sworn in. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth self you got? Thank you very much. You may be seated. It's also my understanding, Mr. Mayor, that the disclosures from the city commissioners were made at the start of the meeting.
That is correct. And to be clear, we are going to address item 8A and B simultaneously. We will hear those presentations back to back, after which we will hear, we'll go through the process, all right? So we'll begin with hearing from the applicant. This is Baywalk Major Site Plan Modification and Master Plan Modification, followed by the Baywalk Variance Request. One second. Go ahead.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the commission. Bonnie Miskell, 14 Southeast 4th Street, Boca Raton, Florida. And I am here on behalf of the applicant. And we do have a brief presentation given the hour. We'll try to move along regarding Baywalk's IPUD. Next slide, please. So this property, and you have an arrow up on the screen, is on the west side of Federal Highway, south of the old Dixie Highway, Federal Highway intersection. It's sandwiched in between a self-storage facility and the Seaborn Cove multi-family residential development, with also multi-family residential across the street. The site is 2.27 acres. The land use is special high-density residential, and the zoning is IPUD. Next slide, please. We're going to keep going here so that we can move through this. So the proposed site plan, and I think that's what is on your screen. Wait a minute, I think you jumped ahead. I'm sorry. Yeah, but I think you moved, we had the, next slide. I think actually, is this the substitute? Because it's missing. All right, well, that's fine. We'll skip ahead, I'm sorry. Okay. So this was previously approved as a 40 unit multi-family apartment. It was not built, it was approved around 2008. It never got built. The proposed site plan is actually reduction in units. It's a 25 unit townhome fee simple project, for sale project. Six different buildings. Five of them have four units each, and one of them has five units. But they're two-story townhomes. Next slide, please. Okay. This is definitely a little different than I have here. Am I, is this yours by chance, Amanda? Is this yours? Strange, okay, so. Okay, I'm sorry. I'm just going to try to catch up to the slides. Okay, keep going. Okay, well, we'll work with this. Excuse me for looking at the screen. So this project was oriented in such a way that the commercial corridor, which is Federal Highway, the more common uses are on the frontage, which are shown in yellow here. We have a gym, which is on the lower southeast corner. And we have a game room and pool area for the community, for the 25 units. And you can see the different buildings that I just discussed. The 5-4 unit two-story product versus the lower southeast corner is a five unit building type, type A versus type B. Towards the west of the site is the dog park and open space. And then the green areas are the buffers around the site. And each of the townhome has been designed to allow for pools, which you can see on the back. Obviously, one means of ingress and egress off of Federal Highway and two rows straddling each side of the driveway of townhomes. Next slide, please. Okay. Again, this is a proposed site plan, not colored for you. Next slide, please. And this is the landscaping plan. You can see the green space and the buffers, the dog park on the lower southwestern corner. The, just to point out a few highlights of this plan. The open space that would have been required is 5,000 square feet. We doubled that. So we basically meet or exceed all the standards, with the exception of one, which is along the front. We're asking for, and I think it may be the next slide, who knows? But we'll see what the next slide is. Yeah, this actually is not it. But that's showing you the common area on the northeast corner, which is the game room. Next slide, please. And that's the landscaping plan enlarged for you as well. That's the frontage along Federal Highway, showing you both the gym, which is on the lower side, and the pool and game room on the upper side. And it gives you some of the materials. And also, proposed as our piece of art, it's not a statue thankfully, is actually a green living wall. And it's been pre-approved. The details will follow when we go to the art board. But it is intended to be a green living wall. Next slide, please. So this is where I wanted to go. We've asked for one variance. The pedestrian zone and the active use area runs along the frontage and is measured off the build to line. We are required to have a total of 20.5. We have 18.5. We're asking for a two-foot decrease in that, in the active use area. As you can see from this particular sketch, we have a huge amount of area in the frontage, which again, is in front of our common buildings and at the entrance on Federal Highway. So that is the only thing that we are not meeting code specifically. However, we have an enormous area in the frontage, and we meet all other requirements, and your staff is in support of this. Next, please. Elevations for you for the type A buildings. Contemporary design, earth tones, lots of glass. And again, a two-story building, which 45 feet would be allowed. We're only at 29 feet. Next slide. And this is the building type B. Again, contemporary, two-car garage. Those garages are EV ready, and we do have some EV spaces as well. Next, please. This is just some pretty rendering showing you what the art is intended to look like. And it has behind it, that's the frontage building. And behind it are the two-story townhomes. Next slide. Again, these are the one-story buildings fronting on Federal Highway. Another perspective. Next, please. This is the entry going in, which is flanked by, again, the common buildings for the residents, the game room and the gym. And the two-story townhome products flank the driveway west. Next slide. Again, additional elevations for you. Next slide. And that's looking at the project from across the street on Federal Highway. It's designed by Randall Stoff, who's a well-known Delray designer. And this will give you a perspective of where we sit in between the buildings to our north and south. North side is a self-storage facility. The south side is Seaborn Cove, which is a multi-family development. We're very compatible, obviously, to our neighbors. And I think that may be it. We're happy to answer any questions. I'm joined by our team. And we have only one comment concerning a condition, which is planning a zoning condition number 15 that I can speak about now or I can wait on that, whatever is your preference. And thank you very much.
Thank you. Let's reserve the questions until we hear from staff. So thank you so much. Now we'll turn to our planners.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Steph, is there here for any questions that you may have about the project?
Okay. We're going directly to questions. I'm going to turn to Commissioner Cruz. If you have any comments or questions, either for staff or the applicant.
For the applicant, yes.
All right, Bonnie? So Gina, if you want to just stay up here, so this way, if they have any questions, we can cover both, all right? And we do have two sides of the podium. We can go back and forth.
We're friends, so it's okay.
All right.
The first question I have. Mike, hello? This is a for-sale product, correct?
Correct, yes.
Okay. That's really positive, because we want to bring homeownership to the city. It's something that we've been advocating for a long time. So thank you for bringing a for-sale product. My next question is, can you give us, you briefly went over the history. I think this was approved prior by 42 apartments, was it?
It was 40. It was approved not quite 20 years ago, about 15 years ago. And it was 40, and it was an apartment, it was apartments, basically.
Perfect. So instead of rental apartments, we're going to be doing homeownership. And it's going to be how many townhomes?
There will be 25. We will be plating, so they will be acquiring their individual lots.
Fantastic, all right. Thank you for that information. I'm really, really happy to see homeownership coming to the city. Instead of doing 40 apartments, we're doing 25 townhomes. And I think you mentioned they each have their own individual pool, which is.
They have the ability. Are they definitely going to be constructed? Oh, it's an upgrade, so it's their choice. But there is room for them to have their own private pool.
Very nice. All right, well, thank you for your presentation. At the end, I'll be happy to hear a little bit more about the variants that you mentioned. But besides that, I don't have any more questions at the moment. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Hay, then followed by Commissioner Kelly.
Yes, I'm very happy to see this 25 units townhouses. You spoke, I believe, about the two-foot variance. Could you show me that again?
Yes, so if you look at the screen, and I'm going to get my page in front of me as well. The frontage along Federal Highway would have been required from the build to line to be 20.5 or 20 and a half feet. And we're proposing. And we're proposing 18 and a half. So we, in order for us to have the green space that we show on this plan, we really wanted to skinny that down. And, and the other consideration here is that we have reduced the number of units from 40 to 25. And in fact, this site would even allow 45 units. So we're a little more or a little less than half of what you could build here. So there's just not gonna be the same volume of activity on this site with only 25 units. So we feel very comfortable that the 18 and a half feet that's been proposed that you're looking at on the right side of the screen is more than enough to accommodate the pedestrian zone activities that you might expect. You know, being walkable and having space and also having landscaping.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Thank you. That just one, the egress and egress. That's right on the right-hand side here.
Yes, so there's one driveway that's on Federal Highway for the entire development with the ability, there's a version of a hammerhead turn should somebody go all the way through. It is a gated community, and the gate, and if you look at where the two cars are, that's, they're basically at where the gate is. There are parking spaces on the open side of the gate in the event that there's a guest that comes in and they need to have a space to park or the handicap space is needed, but it is going to be a gated community.
Okay. Do you have a picture of the parking?
Well, the, so let me go over the parking, and thank you for asking that question because I skipped over that. So this site and this particular development would require, I think, is it 54 or 52 spaces? 50 parking spaces. We actually have 56 spaces that are shown on this plan. Two of the spaces, there are two spaces per unit within the garage, and those spaces count towards each unit. So we have 25 units, two spaces in the garage for each unit, so that's 50, and then we have an extra six spaces. And that's for guests. And you can, if you look at this plan, you'll see gaps between some of the buildings, and that's where some of those guest spaces are.
Okay.
So we definitely meet, we exceed the parking requirement, the demand.
Okay, thank you. That's it for me.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Kelly?
Thank you. I am not gonna repeat everything my colleague said, but I'm happy to see a high-end for-sale development coming in, so thank you. My question, though, has to do with the number 15. So I'll ask my other question really quick, and then we'll go to that. How many, I know that there's charging stations. How many charging stations will there be for the use of the residents?
So the garages, and I hope I'll get this right, and maybe you want to come up, Felipe, but the garages will have, they'll be EV-ready, but we also have, is it six spaces that are EV?
Ms. Miskel, if you could speak into the microphone.
I'm just looking at Felipe for, if you want to, yes.
Should I introduce myself?
Yes.
Felipe Vergara on the development team. So I think the requirement is four parking spaces that need to be included as an EV charger. So we'll pick four spaces within the units, but every single unit is gonna be EV-ready. So if any buyer wants to, you know, put in whatever charger that they want, they'll have the conduit in the garage space so they can put it in.
Right.
Or we can put it in for them.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. We've heard from, I'm sorry, Commissioner, but did that conclude your question? Was there a follow-up?
Well, no, I wanted to talk about the, the other conditional approve. And I know that Commissioner Cruz wanted to speak about that also, so I just didn't want to bypass that.
If you want to segue into it, then we'll turn back to Commissioner Cruz.
Do you have anything?
No, not right now. So just go ahead. No, no, just go ahead.
So staff, I guess maybe we'll ask staff first what that conditional, the conditional improvement was.
We'll have applicant express what the concerns of the conditions, and then staff will respond.
Okay, perfect.
So in your, in PNC comment number, or condition number 15, most of which we don't have a problem with, but there is one line that we'd like to ask for some flexibility. And, and I'll read 15, and then I'll go over the one line. It reads, "The required 12-foot-wide Type 2 landscape buffer running along the north property line must be track, a track at the time of plating, not a problem." Then it goes on to say, and it's more of an advisory comment. It says, "Be advised that the entire landscape buffer must remain clear of obstructions, i.e. walls, fences, pavers, et cetera." And if you could put on our screen one of the plans, because I think it'd be easier for me to explain what we're trying to do. So this is a for-sale product, so we, it is not as transient as a community. People will be buying here, and we hope staying here for a very long time. So what, what we believe our buyers are going to want is more privacy in their backyards where their pools may be. Obviously, if you have a pool, you have to fence that pool for protection reasons. The, what we're, what we would like to do is to be able to run the privacy fences along the platted lot lines, which are the townhomes themselves. So if you look on the screen, what I'm, what I'm suggesting is that there would be perpendicular fences that would run along the unit line all the way to the edge of the buffer. There are walls on the north and the west side on the property line, and then there's an existing fence on the south property line. We'd like to intersect with that. We're not proposing to change the buffer requirement. The buffer will be there. It will continue to be there. We have a very lush, beautiful buffer. We're pretty, pretty pleased with our landscape plan. So we're not asking to take away any open space. What we're asking to do is let the owners that live and face the wall in that buffer have the benefit of privacy and that green space. We are not suggesting, because I, and I think that may be one of staff's concerns, you're, you're taking what is viewed as a track of, of community property, and you're putting a fence on it, and the concern, one of the concerns may be maintenance of it. If it's behind a privacy wall, how do you maintain it? So what we've designed literally on, along those tracks are gates that will allow the common area maintenance people to get in and maintain all of that property. But it just gives the homeowner the ability, when they're not maintaining the property, to have some privacy and to be able to use that yard as their own. And I think you've all recognized that it is so hard for young people or senior people to find a place like this that they can move into, that they can afford. And we want them to get the full benefit of fee simple ownership, which would include more of a yard, and that's what we're trying to do. So that's all that we're asking. Still will remain a tract that the association will be responsible for maintaining, and they will have access to the track. But it will be bisected at the wall with some form of a fence to allow them, when it's not being maintained, to have the use of it, the benefit of it, and some privacy from that. That's all.
22 feet between the two?
The width, Felipe, would you come back up? I'm sorry.
One second. Go ahead.
Hi, Amanda Rad, again, Planning and Zoning Director. Good evening, everyone. The proposed buffer is 12 feet, which is required per code. These buffers are required based on the adjacent uses. So to clarify, what is to the north is a developed C3 parcel. It is a self-storage facility, which requires the additional buffer to the south. The code is not designed to inhibit the use of these areas. It is not designed to limit private space. It doesn't limit the amount of backyard that is permitted, but it does require that track to be owned and maintained by the association itself. Because if anything, that does have to be maintained by the association. And if anything goes wrong or cited, we need to be able to hold the association responsible for that. So the request by the applicant is to essentially, and I'm going to kind of simplify it, is to bifurcate that track and split it up in its use between each of the units. We have not permitted that in the past, and staff is recommending 15 to remain the way it is. What we have allowed is for privacy and safety to be able to allow fences to come up to the buffer, but not intersect the buffer.
All right.
And if I can elaborate, which we've, we've talked about this with staff quite a bit. We certainly do understand their position. This is a little unique in that it's only a 25-unit development. We're not Seaborn Cove. We're not the Mariners, whatever it is called, across the street. It's a 25 fee simple townhome project. And we are not changing the requirements or conditions. The buffer will be specified as a track. It will be maintained by the association. It will be owned by the association. We're just asking for flexibility on the use of that area and being able to at least provide at some point some privacy when it isn't being maintained. And that would just mean allowing some sort of a fence to connect with the wall. But we're providing all of the minimum requirements and exceeding them in most instances. As it relates to the buffer, the buffer is a lush buffer. It is in accordance with the code. The only thing that we're asking for flexibility is to allow those fences to intersect with the wall and for those to be used essentially by the one fee simple owner with the maintenance of it being the responsibility of the association. That's all. And there isn't a code requirement that says we can't do it. It's just not typical. But this is a very small community, so we're hoping that that would be sufficient mitigation, so.
What was the space in between, again, between the buffer and the width?
The width of the buffer is 12 feet, so currently the way it's designed, and please correct me if I'm, if I'm misrepresenting. The end of the unit ends, they have a backyard or a patio that would allow for a pool to be built. Up into that space, they are permitted to fence in whatever it is truly their property. And then past their backyard, there is a requirement for a landscape buffer. That is, that is the use that is required, a landscape buffer. Their request is to continue those fences to enclose the buffer within each of the units. And I understand, design-wise, the desire to do that. It would create the illusion of a bigger backyard, but remove the requirement for, for the buffer and for that to be used solely as landscape space and to be accessible by the association for maintenance. Because if there are fences put in, and not that this is impossible, but if you can imagine the 12 units that are across there with 12 fences, maintenance of each one would have to be done by hand, and they would have to have access to each of the units in order to maintain it. It is not something we have permitted in the past.
Could we make it the responsibility of the owner to just take care of that if we were to give that extension?
I think we certainly could do that. I think that the city may have more of an assurance if it was the HOA's responsibility. But just to clarify, and I think your question was, the width of those units on the screen is 30 feet. So what we're proposing is to extend those property lines all the way to the wall. So it'll essentially be 30-feet chunks of buffer. The buffers will all still be there. It's the same buffer that is required, but they're just being bisected by, you know, a fence on each side. But it's 30 feet wide, and as Amanda was discussing, the width of the buffer is gonna be exactly as what it's required to be by code. We're not suggesting to change that.
The fence would be inside before the buffer.
It would go, it would go all the way, it would go from the back of the pool area all the way to the wall. And, and the buffer would be, it would cut through that buffer. So the, you know, if, if here's the fence, here's the buffer, you have the hedges and the bushes that are on each side of the fence. And then there is proposed, there are gates at every single fence to allow through movement. And unfortunately, it didn't end up on the screen. But I even have a picture of what they would look like if you want me to hand this around so you can get a better sense, if that's helpful.
Commissioner Cruz, if you look at that green line, that is the buffer area at the top of the screen. And the propose, the proposal would then take that one common area and bifurcate it into 12 smaller areas with fences that intersect that green area.
And this, and this shows it, these are the fences that provide access so that no maintenance person would be going through anyone's unit. They can get there from the outside and just go right, continue through right across the entire length of the buffer to do maintenance when they do their regular maintenance.
In a way, I see the point because, I mean, it would benefit the house and make it like a larger backyard. I do understand the, the point from staff where if it were, let's say, an apartment complex, they would want to have that area as public, but I don't know that, I don't think that any, anyone from the public would be even able to use that landscaping area for themselves. So I wouldn't necessarily be opposed to it because it would make the property value higher, and it would be, it would not really be used by anybody in the public because it's, it would be, I mean, at that point, it would basically be gated, a gated community, so.
Can I add a little more into it? So landscape buffer is, it's not just the required between, because it is two different uses of the purpose. Buffers oftentimes utilize it for visual barriers. In this case, that's exactly what's required between this residential development versus this commercial development existing on the north. So this is, and in addition to that, these individual units are proposing, and very possibly individual, their spas or their pools. So these buffers are ultimately really to protect their privacies against this non-residential use. So if the fence is allowed, it will break those continuous barriers. And then obviously, we can have some sort of legal instrument. These buffers will have to remain, and all the proposed investigations must comply with the today's code. However, in, it practically oftentimes does not maintain as, as is proposed, and it can lose the purpose of the buffers. So one of those reasons staff is now recommending it and extended these fences all the way to the wall, which is at the property line. So that's one of the reasons, and I wanted to emphasize, and I'm pretty sure we do totally understand that this is a fee simple. We want this owners enjoy their privacy, the owners enjoy, so they are extended their backyard. But there is a purpose of the buffer, and we need, staff is put a condition, so we need to keep this purpose of these buffers.
And I'll also add that these spaces are not really meant for the public. They are meant for visual and physical barriers. It doesn't mean that it can't be used if it was in a public, a more public or a rental property. It could be used to have some sort of recreation, but that is not the purpose, and we wouldn't imagine that this would be used that way.
We could do some form of a declaration, a restrictive covenant that is recorded against the property, that what has been approved will be maintained in the condition that it was approved, or even more lushly, in perpetuity so that there'd be an additional restriction of record beyond just the approval. But essentially, our landscape plan is an approval, and we must comply with it. And if it is degraded in any way, we have to restore it to maintain its integrity. And this developer, of course, would do that. But, but I think as a, a for-sale product, it will make it easier for us to do that, in any event. And then one last thing. It is an infill planned unit development, which means it's not a suburban PUD with lots of open spaces for children and people to play in. And so while we have quite a few, we have a game room, we have a swimming pool, we have a gym, we have a dog park, and we have double the open space that would be required. You have to keep in mind, though, that there will be young families that will be moving in here. They're all three-bedroom apartment, or excuse me, they're all three-bedroom townhomes. So it gives some additional space for those families to grow and thrive in the city. And frankly, no one's building townhomes anymore. Of all of my projects, this is the only one that's coming through. And I, that's why I'm so excited about it. But I think it gives people an opportunity to grow in that space by allowing this. In any event, I think I've beaten the dead horse, so I'll stop. But thank you very much for allowing us to speak.
All right, thank you. Are there any further comments or questions from my colleagues? Commissioner Kelly? I'm sorry, let's go Commissioner Hay. We'll go in order. Hay, then Commissioner Kelly.
I'm just gonna ask Amanda. Did PD have any conditions of approval that we need to talk about?
The police department?
No, no. Oh, no, I'm sorry.
Plenty of zoning. Um, so we, we did have several conditions of approval. Um, I think that the applicant's in agreement with all of them except for number 15, which we are discussing.
Very good. Very good. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Kelly?
Thank you. Um, I have a couple of, I've been sitting here bouncing off, you know, the pros and cons to each, you know? I, I understand the applicant's point of, you know, kind of closing that in and having that be private space, but at the same time, closing it in, you're closing in than your neighborhood too. So I can see where you want to give residents privacy, but at the same time, you also want to give a place for kids to run and play. So, and it's a small neighborhood. So I mean, obviously we have city parks, lots of city parks that hopefully will get utilized. But, you know, I understand the point, but I guess some of my points are if they put in a pool, they have to have a pool fence. So then we're kind of requiring there to be fencing where they wouldn't maybe put a fence and then we're allowing them to make their fence further. And then we're opening access up to more people, to their backyards where there's pools. And I just think it gets too complicated. I think that having it just be an open space, if you have a pool, you put a pool in. If you don't have a pool, you can walk in the back landscape area and run around with your kids. And I doubt that your HOA is going to come out and say, you can't hit a ball with your kid in the back common area. So I feel like you're almost creating these little private units and there's not that community that you would want in a small community like that where, you know, it's your, it's going to be 26 families or 26 residents that, you know, maybe they wouldn't want to have compartmental fencing. And, you know, this is truly meant to be a landscape buffer between the other surrounding, you know, businesses. And I feel like, you know, you know, by allowing that extra space, you're then encroaching on, and granted it's, it's just a public storage, but you're then, you're encroaching then on that barrier. And I don't know if the people coming in and out of public storage are loud and make a lot of noise and they're driving in and out. And then you've decreased that landscape buffer for your residents where that buffer.
Well, actually you're not changing the buffer at all. Well, okay, the buffer, it will be exactly as what was approved and proposed. And it is a visual buffer. You know, there's a wall already there. Um, so the, the trees are the same, the bushes are the same, the hedges are the same. All of that is the same. The question is, do you, if you look on the screen.
But it's not going to maintain the character when you break up, when you, when you have yards that are broken up. And I, and I understand what you're saying. There's going to be trees and there's going to be bushes, but you also lose the integrity of that. You're not going to have the consistency from yard to yard to yard. It is going to be choppy and broken up. And I, I am fine with the frontal variance. I think that's important. But I'm, I struggle with finding where, uh, where this landscape buffer is, is vital. I think that, you know, if your residents put in a pool, they have to put a fence in. It has to be protected from other, you know, residents, but if they don't put a pool in, then they can, they're free to use that space. However, your HOA decides to allow them. Am I correct, Amanda?
Yes, yes ma'am. And I will also note that staff is in support of the variance as well. We think it was well justified. And, uh, being that the uses that they are providing at the front of the property are private, we, we were, um, happy to support that request.
One thing that I would like to add is when we were putting together the concept for this property, we immediately saw the opportunity to do for sale product. That's what we do and that's what we, what we have always envisioned for, for this property. It's what, we, we don't do rental. We only do for sale development. And, uh, this is, you know, one thing that was surprising to me because every, uh, in the other cities that we've done projects, townhouse projects, and we have been able to put in fencing that basically privatizes backyards and that is vital for homeownership. People want privacy when they own their home. If it was a rental community, I wouldn't have an issue, you know, with, with the resistance that we're getting on this point. But for homeownership, people want security. People want privacy. It's not only for, not only just for their kids. It's, you know, for their pets as well. They go out at night to let their dog, you know, do their business before they, you know, they go to bed. They don't want to be, you know, they don't want to have to be super vigilant. They open the door, they let their dog do their business and, and they come back in. That's why we've provided a dog park. It's, we, we believe that our target market is going to be family, young families, uh, with pets. And so it's not only for the kids, that, you know, these fences are only for the kids. It's, it's for their pets as well. They're, these fences are, are vital for being able to offer a for sale product. Absolutely. But I just wanted to reiterate that.
Right. We need to proceed. Was there a follow-up to that Amanda? It looks like you're about to say something.
I, I just wanted to also add, um, talking to engineering, there was also an added concern when you add fences to this, there would be requirements for easement consent forms to put those fences in there. I mean, it does get a little bit complicated. Um, Jay, you also mentioned that the design of the landscape buffer could possibly allow the fences to come out three feet into the buffer without jeopardizing the integrity of the buffer and where the planting is. So we'd be happy to allow that if engineering had all of their, um, legal requirements accounted for. Aside from that, though, staff does still recommend the condition as, as designed.
All right. Is there any other further comments or questions from my colleagues? I have to turn now to public comment on this item, after which we'll return back to staff, then back to the applicant. And then, uh, from there, final voting. All right. If you'd like to speak specifically on this item, now would be the time to approach the podium. Make sure your comments are relevant specifically to the major site plan modification and the variance request. We'll go to those online after we've heard from those in person.
Were you sworn in?
Hi.
Were you sworn in?
What?
Were you sworn in?
No, obviously.
Okay. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony gave me the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth that I hope you got?
I do.
Thank you.
So I'd like to say as.
Your name, your name for the record, sir?
Oh, Ernest George McNolly, uh, 710 Northeast 7th Street, Boynton Beach, Florida. Anything else? I'm five feet nine. I'm sorry. So, uh, you know, I sit in all these meetings and I find it interesting that, uh, developers and HOAs and, uh, the city make all these promises. But if, if you really listen to what this is about, it's to increasing the sales value of these units. And it's also privatizing them. And you keep bringing up the word, security, security, security. And also I find lightness in this presentation because I've heard this a few weeks and of many times. And there were some issues with the fire department, with the police department. And then we're starting to see.
Sir, I'm going to stop your time right here. Is anything you have to say about the code and the applicability of the code of the requested variance?
I'm just going to make a statement to the city manager.
No, your time has expired. Your time has expired. You may sit down or you may leave. Officer, please remove this individual from the chambers. All right, let's proceed. Is there anyone else who would like to speak specifically on this item? Seeing no one else in the chambers, Manny, is there anybody else online that would like to speak on this item?
Mr. Mail, I currently have no hands raised.
With that, public comment on this item is now closed. We'll return back now to staff and then finally with the applicant. All right.
Yeah, I did want to add just one, uh, more point. I wanted to confirm with the building official who is present. Um, if there are pools being constructed on the property itself, the fee simple property, the fence that is required for the pool must be on that property. So fences that are on HOA property would not count for that pooled area. And that creates, um, a lot of messiness for lack of better words, where we could end up with double fencing, which Septet always requires us not to do. It just does get a, a lot more difficult to regulate, uh, maintain and enforce.
All right. Thank you for that, staff. Uh, was there anything else from the applicant? Any follow-up based on those last comments? So the commission can make a decision.
The building.
One second. Go ahead.
I'm sorry. Bonnie Miskel, again, we do understand the building, um, department comment, and that's not a problem anyway. Uh, should someone install a pool, they were intending to put the pool fence on the property line. So we understand that. Uh, we, we, from a marketability perspective, where we're really just trying to do what's best for the community that we think we're selling to. And we respectfully request some flexibility there, but thank you very much for the time. We appreciate it.
Thank you. Comments and questions from my colleagues? Let's make this the last round before I open the floor for a motion. Anything else from my colleagues? Seeing none, it looks like we're ready to move forward with the decision. There are two items before us. Let's process them individually. The first item is 8A. This is the major site plan modification and master plan modification. May I have a motion to approve for this request?
So moved.
We have a motion from Commissioner Hay. Is there a second?
Second.
And there is a second from Commissioner Kelly. All right.
And I just, I just want to clarify that that, the motion includes all the conditions as proposed.
Yes.
You made the motion, sir, so.
Yes.
All right. Okay. And you, you concur with, all right. With that, uh, we have a motion and a second. City clerk, I'm going to turn to you now for the roll call.
Commissioner Kelly?
Yes.
Commissioner Hay?
Yes.
Commissioner Cruz?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Turkin is absent. Mayor Penserga?
Yes.
In a roll call vote, the motion passed unanimously.
All right. Thank you. The next item here is the Baywalk variance. Uh, is there a motion to approve the requests for the variance?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion from Commissioner Kelly and a second from Commissioner Hay. Uh, city clerk, please begin.
Commissioner Kelly?
Yes.
Commissioner Hay?
Yes.
Commissioner Cruz?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Turkin is absent. Mayor Penserga?
Yes.
In a roll call vote, the motion passed unanimously.
And thank you. We are now moving on. Thank you so much, everybody who was part of that. We're to move on now to item 8C. Item 8C is proposed ordinance number 23 dash 016. It is a second reading. Uh, this is, yes.
I may.
Yes.
Um, I would like to table this item. There was an addition or an amendment to the item that I wasn't aware of until it was brought to my attention when I walked in. So I would like some time to review that if possible, if the board will allow.
I'm comfortable with that. My question to you would be, item D is also related. Is that something?
We can keep D or we can just table both. I'm fine with that.
I'm, it's, it's your request.
So we'll table both if that's okay.
All right. Is that all right with every, let's process the motion to table individually.
Oh, what, what are we tabling?
Uh, the, this is item 8C and she's also proposing to table item 8D because they go together.
Okay.
I'm indifferent. So.
Okay with me.
That's all right with you? All right.
Yeah, I would just ask that staff, please let everyone know what the last minute change was. If there's a last minute change that was made that is maybe after I would have printed out this 40 something page document so that, um, we're all on the same page as far as something that was added after the fact. Thank you.
All right. Um, Commissioner Cruz, uh.
Motion to table.
Can, can we get a clarification on when to, or is this tabling to stay certain?
Tabling till next meeting.
Thank you.
Which would be September 14th.
You, you've already advertised for second reading, so you can continue this till the next meeting. You don't have to necessarily re-advertise.
We're good. Okay, we're good. So the motion was to table item 8C. All right. Is there a second to that request?
Second.
We have a second from Commissioner Hay. All those in favor of tabling item 8C, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, say no. The ayes have it. This item is tabled. And Commissioner, do you want to continue?
I'll go ahead and make a motion to table item 8D.
To the next meeting?
The next commission meeting. Yes, mayor.
All right. We have a motion. Is there a second? We have a second from Commissioner Hay. All those in favor to table this item, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, say no. The ayes have it. Motion passes. We're tabling these two items to the next meeting. Uh, the next item is 10A, discuss town square investigation scope of work. Uh, because Vice Mayor Turkin is not here, I would like to request that we table this item. Commissioner Kelly has made the motion. I heard the second from Commissioner Cruz. Are there any further discussions on the motion? All those in favor of tabling this, I'm sorry, Commissioner Kelly, I assume to the next meeting, but I want to clarify that with you. Tabling to when?
Yes. I mean, it, unless Vice Mayor Turkin had, I don't know if he said anything specific as far as putting it off. So I mean, I'm fine with the next meeting unless he wants to move it.
Let's just take it one meeting at a time.
Sure.
Thanks for that.
All right. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor of tabling item eight, I'm sorry, 10A, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, say no. The ayes have it. Motion passes. 10A is tabled to the next meeting. The next item before us is item 10B, in-house attorney update. I'm going to turn now to our HR director, Tenille DeCoste, for the update of where we are.
Good evening, Mayor, Commission. Tenille DeCoste, Director of Human Resources. Next slide, Manny, please. Next slide. As you're aware, we interviewed, uh, the top three candidates. Next slide, please. On, uh, Wednesday, August 23rd and Thursday, August 24th, the top three candidates, and this is just in alphabetical order, is Eric Jean Bellany, Roger Bryant and Shawna Lamb. Next slide. Um, I need directions from our lovely commission. So there's two items I need help with. The first item, uh, do we, are we going to tonight approve or agree to our top candidate? Or we had another applicant apply, are we going to put this on hold, interview the next, um, candidate that has passed? He is eligible for interview, or we can discuss other options. So that's the directors I'm looking for tonight.
Thank you, Tenille. Uh, you did mention to me of this other applicant, uh, but you had also mentioned to me that this person did not have city attorney experience.
Correct. He was never a city attorney. He worked as a, as a consultant, basically.
So for that reason, uh, I'm not interested, uh, in interviewing this individual. I want to make sure that whoever we select, if that is the direction of this board, has city attorney experience. I think that would, that's just obvious to me, but, uh, that is my position. Um, Commissioner Hay, I was going to go around in order, but that's fine.
No, I would agree with you, mayor, with the exception that I think this is a very important, uh, decision. And I would like to have a full board, uh, with the Vice Mayor present, uh, before we make this decision. So I would like to table it, not for the reason of that, but just for the fact that I think we need all five here when we make this decision.
Understood.
Okay. Um, I am actually comfortable moving forward, but it really just depends on what the majority.
I'll second your motion.
The table, is that right?
Yeah.
Okay. So we have a motion before us to table this item to the next meeting and we have a second to do that. Are there any further discussions on this? All right. Seeing none, we have a motion to table this item in a second. All those in favor of tabling this item to the next meeting. And let me just confer, that is to the next meeting, right? You said?
Yes, to the next.
All right. All those in favor of tabling this item to the next meeting, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, say no. The ayes have it. All right. The motion passes unanimously. We're going to table this item to the next meeting. Thank you so much, HR director. We are moving on to the next item on the agenda, uh, which is item 12A. This is proposed ordinance number 23 dash 018, first reading wireless communication facility annual registration. I'm going to turn now to our city attorney to read the item into the record.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is ordinance number 23 dash 018, in accordance with the city of Boynton Beach, Florida, mending the land development regulations, chapter three, article five, section 13, wireless communication facilities to allow for an annual registration process and fee provided for conflict severability, codification and effective date. This ordinance before first reading this evening.
All right. Thank you. Uh, this is first reading, so there's no public comment. In fact, all three of these proposed ordinances are first reading. Is there anything from staff, a brief, you're already here. Thank you so much. Please begin.
Good evening. Um, my name is Jayon Kim with the Planning and Zoning Division. Um, good evening, mayor and the city commissioners. I'm here presented, um, quick, um, text amendments regarding section 13 wireless communication facility of a chapter three, article five of a land development regulations. So there are three, um, summary of changes. One is annual registrations and association fees. One is annual registrations and association fees requirements. And then wireless communication facility on the public-owned property, such as the city-owned properties, and clean up the regulations in regards to unused wireless communication facilities. Next slide. So I'd like to go over with it quickly. First thing, the current land development regulations requires annual registrations and certifications. However, it does not outline or regulate the registration standards or necessary informations. The proposed amendments will define requirements and establish the associated fees for annual registrations to be provided by the facilities owners, operators, and service providers. The amendment also proposed eliminate the current process and then standards established in the current regulations, but entering, requiring entering to written agreements with the city acceptable by the city attorney. Lastly, this amendment proposed to clean up the removal process and the removal process of abandonment, unused unsafe wireless communication facility to direct to under abandonment property of the city ordinances as well as the Florida Building Code. That concludes my presentations. I'm here for any questions.
Thank you. Let's begin to my left. Commissioner Kelly, if you have any questions for staff?
I do not have any questions. I just want to say thank you. I think that this is, these amendments are kind of a long time coming. We have these wireless communication towers that can kind of basically do their own thing. So thank you for taking this. And I do, how many? I'm just curious, how many unused wireless communication facilities do we have right now?
So far, we do not have that clear record yet. However, one of the main purposes of doing this, so far, we have thirteen sites. Some of them are very active, and some of them are not very active. So, which we do not have a clear record showing what's going on. Another one is that telecommunications facilities are located on the rooftop. The city currently does not have a database where they are located and what type of services are provided. So by requiring this, they, all the providers and operators and the tower owners must be submitted annual registrations prior to October 1st, which will give us a database where they're located, how it has been maintained.
Okay. Thank you. Yeah, I was just curious how many. So I'd be interested to see as this progresses, you know, how many unused towers are and what we're going to do about them. I mean, if they're abandoned, I mean, I guess at some point, there was an owner of them. But if they're abandoned, you know, is, is the city going to be on the hook to remove them? Or what's the process for that?
Right. We have Chapter 10, Article 2, abandoned property of a Part II Code of Ordinances. It will go through that process. And then further, if the property owner does not take it down to remove safely, it will be go through the special machinery process. And then the building official will be involved. It depends on, it is determined unsafe.
Thank you. That's all my question.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Hay?
Talk a little bit more about the WCF. Are there violations going on now with the process that we have or the standards that we have written? What, talk a little bit more about what you said they need to be in a written agreement with the city.
So the way it is written, we have about eight total communication towers located in city land, like parks or city utility building sites and that type of stuff. They are currently, the way the code is requires, they have to have a signage, they have to have a fence, they have to have the safety protocols. And as of today, the, recently, it has been addressed. So the all properties, though, my understanding that telecommunication towers has been properly equipped for the safety concerns and as well as the hazard concerns that they're addressing. However, that doesn't mean that they are currently complying with the today's code. By doing this annual registrations, staff will, can review more in-depth and details based on the today's code, and will be able to more address and work with the property owners as well as tower owners to address those issues.
Is there an additional fee for that registration?
Yes, correct. It will be, I'm sorry. You'll be presented the next hearing. Yes.
Okay.
There will be fees associated with it. Yes, and annual registration application will be presented the next meeting, which is September 14th.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Cruz?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right. We have a motion and a second before us. I'm going to turn now to the city clerk for a roll call vote.
Commissioner Kelly?
Yes.
Commissioner Hay?
Yes.
Commissioner Cruz?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Turkin is absent. Mayor Penserga?
Yes.
In a roll call vote, the motion passed unanimously.
Thank you. Moving on to item 12B. Proposed Ordinance Number 23-019. Once again, it's a first reading. Eight-year general employees' pension plan. City Attorney?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is ordinance 23-019, in ordinance of the city of Boynton Beach, Florida, amending Article 2 of Chapter 18 of the Boynton Beach Code of Ordinances entitled Employees Pension Plan, amending Section 18-94 to provide for pension contributions by drop members, amending Section 18-127 Deferred Retirement Option Plan to provide for eight-year drop, repealing Section 18-300 Creation of Consolidated Deferred Retirement Option Plan of Article 11 of Chapter 18 of the Boynton Beach Code of Ordinances, provided for codification, conflict severability, and effective date. This ordinance before your first reading at this time.
Thank you. Is there anything from staff on this item?
Yes, Mayor. What this item does is it puts the general employees in line with our CBA employees. So our police, fire, SEIU employees, both blue and white collar. The only section of the city that didn't have the eight-year drop was the general employee. So just general housekeeping and actually putting them in the place that the rest of the employees are. They're still in a five-year. And I know we have some employees, specifically in the police department, that are coming up on that five-year timeline. So this is, this has a time-sensitive aspect to it.
Will they be affected in the five years that are coming up?
Correct. This, I want to say the closest one is September 28th. So if this isn't passed, we'll lose some individuals that have a great deal of tenure in some of those departments.
Five to eight.
Correct.
As far as, there's no cost here?
There's actually a cost savings. So cost savings, I, if you, can we bring up the GRS? The? It's actually, right over the term of the projection, they're showing a $2.5 million savings to the pension fund on a present value that's about $2 million. In the first two years, there's no cost. And then there's a small cost in the year three and four. Then after that, the pension will realize savings, which? Yeah, from the general, from the general employees. I want to say the general employees' pension is probably about 97% funded. So overall, it's the most healthy and robust pension we have in the city. And this is actually going to cost probably about $2.6 million less. And that was from a study that we used from a GRS, which is our actual area farm.
Wow. You, we actually have a win-win?
Yes. And this didn't get heard at the pension board on the 28th, and they approved.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Commissioner Cruz?
I wanted to bring something up that I discussed with Andrew during our agenda review. And it's line 107, 108, 109, 110. It's basically saying that after, after the five years, I think for years six, seven, and eight, there would be a guaranteed 7% annual fixed rate that the city would be responsible for, regardless of market conditions. Is that right?
That is correct. Yes. So.
What if we have, you know?
If you have a down market.
Yeah.
And the city.
And that's coming, unfortunately.
Correct. You're never going to have a market that's going to have up years. You're always going to have down years. And yes, the city, from that standpoint, if there is an unfunded liability aspect, we will be responsible to fulfill that. But because the general employees' pension is almost to the point of being fully funded, it's not going to be that much of a responsibility for the city to bear. So.
That is one thing that concerns me a little bit. I'm happy to provide that 7%. I think as of now, it's up to year five. But if we could make it market-driven from, for the following years, that would probably be safer for the city if we were to have, you know, some sort of economic. I don't want to say the words, but, you know.
You want the last three years to be
Market-driven if possible.
Dependent upon the market. So the only, the hiccup with that, and I understand the veritable return rate, dropping that below zero with those drop funds would subject those deposits from the city to actually losing money for the employee. So if we put a bare minimum of zero and maybe only do a one-to-eight veritable, maybe that would be a better approach. But again, I would need consensus from the dais to move forward that make, to make that amendment.
Would that be something beneficial to the city, you think?
You're still going to gain that, you're still going to gain that retention aspect. And really, that's what this is geared towards, is making sure we don't lose our talent. The only thing is, is after those three years, when that individual retires, it reverts back to the 7% guaranteed.
I'm not a pension expert. I just wanted to make sure, to protect the city from, in case of bad conditions, we didn't have to like guarantee the 7% in case it was like a two, or a one, or a three, that we would have to pay the difference, which would be the case. But it's up to the board. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any follow-up? Commissioner Kelly?
The reason that this is staying budget-neutral for the most part is because also during years six through eight, the participants are contributing 3%, correct? Into?
Correct.
Right. So they're making up that difference as well. So, you know, that's how we're able to do this without there being a liability or fiscal impact to the city. So, you know, and this is, this deals with our general employees and not police and fire. So, you know, these are our employees who, their pensions are not significant. And they're going to depend on them. And I, I am, I don't want to change any of that. I think that that's something that if we have employees that stay an extra, you know, couple of years, and we're able to realize their talent and keep them with us longer to train and hire the next ones, then I think it's worth the city investing in them as well.
Thank you. Commissioner Hay?
On the first reading, I'm comfortable with the way it's written.
Is that a motion?
That's a motion. That's a motion.
Is there a second from you?
Second.
We have a second. The motion came from Commissioner Hay. The second came from Commissioner Cruz. City Clerk, please begin the roll call.
Commissioner Kelly?
Yes.
Commissioner Hay?
Yes.
Commissioner Cruz?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Turkin is absent. Mayor Penserga?
Yes.
In a roll call vote, the motion passed unanimously.
Okay. Congratulations to the employees. We're going to move on to 12C. Proposed Ordinance Number 23-020. First reading, Boynton Beach Amendments to the Seventh Edition, 2020 of the Florida Building Code. Florida Building Code. City Attorney, then Staff.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ordinance number twenty-three dash zero-two-zero and ordinance of the city of Boynton Beach, Florida, approving Boynton Beach administrative amendments to Seventh Edition, twenty-twenty of the Florida Building Code, providing for conflict severability, codification, effective date. This ordinance before you for first reading this evening.
Great. All right, welcome.
Thank you. Hello, Mayor, Commissioners, Staff, and Residents.
And more staff.
Okay. So I do have a presentation. If you want to go through the presentation, that's fine.
Could you give us the highlights?
Or I can run right through the presentation.
Give us the highlights.
Okay. Highlights are, during this last legislative, legislative session, the recertification was changed a little bit and the change basically was a couple of definitions and the timeline for compliance. A hundred and eighty days were given extra for submitting reports and another hundred and eighty days to complete the, the project. Okay? And there were some also other changes that I made within the document, most notably with the sheds and things that did not require a permit. Okay? One of the items that did not require a permit, item two, Section one-oh-five-two, painting, tiling, carpeting, cabinets, countertops, and similar finished one- and two-family dwellings with no research, no reconfiguration. I added the word no reconfiguration to broaden and make things a little more clearer when it comes to owners of one- and two-family homes doing remodeling on their house. Okay? So removing and replacing kitchen cabinets, bathroom cabinets, no big deal. Tile work, they could change just about everything without electric, mechanical plumbing reconfiguration or the space reconfiguration. So that kind of broadens their, their work a little bit. Okay? Also, I addressed the sheds. There was some confusion about the sheds in the past. I went ahead and went with Palm Beach County Building Code Advisory Board. They have a decision where sheds can be built up to six by six by six without a building permit and that can be site-built, okay, without electric and plumbing. Planning and zoning permits would still be required for setbacks and, and things like that. Also, the biggest change was the site security. When there is a national weather alert, hurricane warning or watch, owners of the construction projects and developers need to clean their sites up so the trash does not become a missile. Okay? Also, they are to remove anything off the roof and either permanently install or remove it and secure and a safe, secure space. Okay? And basically, that's, that's pretty much in a nutshell what we've done. Actually, with the, I want to go back to the building recertification. The city of Boynton Beach has a little more restrictive program than the state does. We are pretty much in line with how Dayton Brower does theirs. We, the state says that only the structural portion of the building needs to be recertified. In the city of Boynton Beach, we're also requiring the electric to be recertified. So all the electric service to the building is in good, safe condition. Okay? Like I said, that goes a little beyond what the state had required, but we feel that that was the right move on our part. And that's it. Have any questions?
All right. Thank you, John. I want to turn to my colleagues. Let's begin with Commissioner Cruz. Any questions for him?
No, just.
No questions? Commissioner Hay, any questions from you?
Uh, not any questions, just a request. John, if, if you could, if you could put a list together for me in layman's terms so I can understand it, of, of when you need a building permit. I, I get questions about, you know, do I need a building permit for this or building permit for that? I don't, I don't know. I tell them to call you.
Yeah.
But if, that's, that's not something I need tomorrow or next week. Okay? Just when you get an opportunity, if you could provide that for me, it would be very helpful.
Sure, sure. And I always tell everybody, if you have a question, contact the building department. We will, we'll let you know if something needs a permit and does or not need a permit. I'm a firm believer in maintenance. Okay? If you perform maintenance on your house, maintenance on your fence, it doesn't require a building permit to do maintenance and it also saves you in time because you're doing maintenance, you don't have to do any replacement or any repairs that would require a permit. But I will get you that information.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Hay. Commissioner Kelly?
Thank you. Thank you, John. Um, as it pertains to the sheds, that, this doesn't affect the visit, our visibility rules and regulations. Like this just has to do with smaller sheds can be placed, they still have to comply with our visibility rules, correct?
Not visibility so much.
Setbacks and?
So, so for setbacks, right. That would be planning and zoning. If somebody builds a site-built shed, six by six by six, then the only permit that they would need to get is a zoning permit. If they bring in a light, light material shed, like a vinyl shed or tin shed, then again, building permits would not be required, only zoning permit. Because the Building Code Advisory Board looks at those type of sheds as removable and temporary. So when high winds are predicted, a storm or hurricane, then it is the obligation of the homeowner to remove that shed until after the, the bad weather has gone by, then they can re, reassemble the shed.
Okay, got.
The only zoning permit would be required.
Okay. So, right. So there, it's subject to zoning permits, but I mean, on a shed, on a larger shed, I mean, six by six by six, to think that they can just build it and then they would have to take it down if there's just, I don't, we can keep talking about it later.
If, if you do a site-built shed up to six by six by six, a building permit is not required. That means you could pour concrete, that means you could build walls, that means you could put a roof on it, that means you can dry the roof in, you can put siding on it. Okay? And a building permit would not be required, only a zoning permit. But if you go over that, then a building permit would be required.
Gotcha. And is it clear? So how are residents going to know that, you know, I mean, they could say, oh, I'm going to put this shed in and I don't need, I just, I'm just wondering how we're going to clarify that you can now put a shed in as long as it's a certain size without any sort of permit, but you still have to get your zoning permit. I just, I'm, I'm fearing or I'm thinking that somebody's going to go through the effort of putting in a, an shed that doesn't need a permit and then zoning is going to come back and say, well, you didn't, and they're going to say, well, I didn't know I needed to go to zoning. So what's, I guess what's our process when it comes to sheds? Because if, you know, if I looked at this and I typed in shedding and say, oh, I, I can put a shed in as long as it's six by six by six, I don't need a permit and I can put a cement structure and I can bolt it to the ground and I can hurricane-proof it and then you find out that there's a zoning permit potential requirement. So how are we? I don't.
Okay. It is in the, the language of the, of the, the code section. We can also utilize the pop-up events that, that we have as to help educating the citizens. We can also use social media and let people know that, you know, there have been changes and, and we can do things like that.
Yeah, I think it's important because I think if we're talking about, we don't need to now have a permit if we're putting in smaller sheds, there, we have to make sure that we're not setting residents up to fail by having this, yes, you don't need a permit, but you may need a zoning permit or you have to make sure you're complying.
Yeah.
With our zoning rules. So I want to make sure that that doesn't, that that's out there and it's, and it's very upfront because.
Yeah. And we could also put it on the internet. We could put it on our, the building code, the building department's webpage. We could possibly put it on community standards webpage, just get it out in as many platforms as possible.
Great, John. Yes, more is better for sure. So, um, and then my only question, the, my last question has to do with the, the building recertification. This has to do with, so this is the twenty-five-year recertification, is that what this is addressing?
Yes. The, actually, the five-five-three, eight-nine-nine, it, they, the state has a thirty-year. Okay? Three miles off of, off the coastline. It's, they do thirty, thirty years after that. City of Boynton Beach is roughly four miles. So instead of splitting the city in a third and two-thirds, we decided just to make the entire city twenty-five years.
Right. And so I know we started that program and I can talk to Adam about this another time too, but I know we recently started that program. I'm just kind of curious and maybe, and I can talk to you about this too, but I'm curious where we are in those inspection, in that inspection program. In particular, I know that there's been some properties in District Four that are, that have been concerning and they're not intercoastal buildings, they're in District Four. So where are we? Is, are we, have we inspected or have we gotten inspection reports for all of the, the properties that fell within that twenty-five years?
We have not accepted any reports as of yet. For the reason that we have changes in the program, our Chapter One, and after the second reading, if approved, I have to submit this ordinance to the Florida Building Commission for their approval. That will take approximately two weeks and then I can go ahead and move forward with it. We've already started with the webpage documentation. I have all the forms ready to go. I've got two forms that are in a process, process of being ADA compliant. And once we get the, that information, then we've also created a tile in Sages for recertification and it is just like applying for a permit. You are submitting all your documentation, uploading it in the tile and the, once the fees are paid, then the review of those reports will be done.
Great. Thank you, John. No, I just, that's something, you know, that, you know, we wouldn't have necessarily foreseen there be issues in District Four along Congress Avenue with building structures and we're seeing that, you know, that there are some issues. So, um, so I'm glad to see that the city is more proactive than, than the state was in having that universal timeline. So I appreciate you and thank you for this and that's all I have for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. I'd like to ask now for a motion to approve ordinance twenty-three dash zero-two-zero. This is first reading. Is there a motion to approve? We have a motion from Commissioner Hay. Is there a second?
I want to say thank you so much for all your research and all your work, but yes, second.
All right, we have a second. Any further comments or discussion? City Clerk, please begin.
Commissioner Kelly?
Yes.
Commissioner Hay?
Yes.
Commissioner Cruz?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Turkin is absent. Mayor Pincirga?
Yes.
And a roll call vote, the motion passed unanimously.
Thank you so much. Thank you, John, for all your hard work and your presentation.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
All right. And just before we adjourn, I just want to thank everybody in the room for being so patient. I know tonight was not an easy night and so thank you for, for sticking it through. Any closing comments from my colleagues? Otherwise, I'll turn, turn a motion to adjourn. There we go. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a second. All those in favor to adjourn, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, the ayes have it. Have a good night, everyone.